If I had a pocket, I would lay in the...
Yeah.
Try to be reasonable with it. I try to get them out of my mind.
To kind of...
I want to convince them just to build the show. Build it.
Exactly. Why won't you? Why don't you do that?
Try to get them to go on some...
I'll take them now.
I want to be clear because it's been sort of a version that we have. This is half the documents.
Right.
The belief that we're sitting out here...
Yes.
I need to dispel that tonight. So that we're gonna do it. We're gonna dispel it.
All right, good. Look at his mouth.
Just work here.
All right. I don't have a gavel. That's what I say all day long. Walk around going, "I don't know, ask somebody else." I don't make any... It's anymore. I just work.
Tom, it's been a long day. First of all, ladies and gentlemen, this is...
Lorie's in Florida.
Who pays in Florida? He says, "Oh, no, never mind." I go, "No, no, Tom, if you need something..."
Yeah.
"No, I'm trying to chase out against you." "Well, what do you think you're gonna call?" "We don't..." I said, "I'll take care of it." "Oh, gee, she looked like, oh, you probably have business."
I can help you with it.
I go, "I hope I don't appear like I'm the visitor behind a frigging curtain."
All right, great, let's go.
Sure.
No. Can I have my gavel so we can get moving? Yeah.
Well, 6:58.
Oh. We've got two minutes. Oh. And just shut up? Oh, my God, okay. All right. Is it good? We're good? Okay. Let's do this. We'll reconvene in open session from executive session. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance... In the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A minute early. Yeah, we'll wait, we'll wait. Approval of minutes. We'll begin with approval of minutes.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from...
Oh, you look at the date. Sorry. From March 7, 2016, open session. And March 8, 2016, open session as written.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Everybody in? Okay, good. We're gonna move on to communication announcements. And we're going to begin with a vote to sign our new Fire Chief's contract.
Chairman, I'll move the Board of Selectmen to sign the contract between the town and Fire Chief William McCarthy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town Clerk Brad Shaw. And Chief McCarthy.
This is the favorite line my dog next to election system. He's wearing Fire Chief.
Turn to the family, Bill.
Yeah, that way. Photo ops.
My pleasure and honor to be able to do this. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
Aye.
State your name.
William McCarthy.
Solemnly promise...
Solemnly promise.
And affirm...
And affirm.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Honestly...
Honestly.
Sincerely...
Sincerely.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
Veteran incumbent...
Veteran incumbent.
Upon me...
Upon me.
As the chief...
As the chief.
Of the North Andover Fire Department.
Of the North Andover Fire Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Speak, 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 speak!
Guys, I saw your agenda, so...
Don't slip him now.
Am I smiling enough, Mike?
Can I make him promise something?
Well, again, I want to thank the board for showing the confidence in me. I'm really looking forward to it. I want to thank all the people that I work with for all the support and confidence they give me. And especially my family, all the support and... We really appreciate it, so... I know you have a big agenda tonight, so I thank you. I'm ready to start tomorrow, so thank you.
There you go. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, you all go home now.
Tomorrow, or after this. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, lem next to him.
Oh, I would like it. If I put Chief, Chief.
Chief, Chief!
Honestly, I want to thank the chief for everything he's done for 38 years here in North Andover. I appreciate everything he did for me. He was my lieutenant, a mentor for me. He helped me through his deputy chief these last eight months, and I'm gonna miss him and wish him a happy end.
Thank you, Mrs. McCarthy. Thank you, Ms. McCarthy.
You have joyful tears, I can see. All right, time for cake.
We need some cake! That's great. All right, moving on to job postings and vacancy log. That's kind of a letdown, you know, for a Fire Chief. No, Kathy, not like, you know, we love you too, but...
Yeah, it's not as interesting, huh?
Not as, yeah. These are as of March 17, and... Any questions or updates or anything along those lines?
I should be able to provide you an update later this week on... We had two major positions open. That's the building inspector position and the director of health position. We're moving forward. I should be able to give you updates later this... What week we in? The week is Monday, good. So later this week on both of those.
Okay. Next up is our One Author, One Community series. With the library and the school department, is anyone here to speak on that?
No, no.
Oh, you're not? Oh, okay.
I am.
Go for it.
All right, well, the library and the school department are partnering to plan a One Author, One Author, rather, One Community series in the fall of 2016 with the goal of fostering a sense of community through the promotion of literacy and intergenerational discussions. And at this point, they're looking to raise $15,000 to fund major events in the series and are looking for sponsors, so... There's a pamphlet that is available, I would assume, on the public school website as well at the library. And I bet we can pick it up at Town Hall and all of that.
All of that.
And all of that.
Yes.
Yep. And different sponsorships and how people can promote. It's a great idea.
Just try to go to Osgood Landing.
Okay, yeah.
Instead of Town Hall.
Instead of Town Hall, yes, sorry. At least for a while. Okay, moving on to spring events for the DPW.
I'm Madam Chairman, and as has been the tradition, Mr. Thibodeau, Director of Public Works, has forwarded to you folks... For spring cleanup, the Household Hazardous Waste Day, access to sea recycling and the like, and giving you this for review. Our goal would be to communicate this to the public through our townwide communication system, in addition to the town's website, social media and the like, so that folks are aware of what we're doing moving forward.
Great. And moving on to our fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation, Community Recommendations. I think John Simons has entered the room. Give him a moment to get settled.
Doesn't get to sit down.
I know, yeah.
I'm not sure if everybody has the material, but I'll pass it out.
So, John, I know you've provided, you're gonna give us some additional material, so you know the board was provided with just an overview of the vote. I had the pleasure of sitting through a...
Oh, yeah.
Very, very long CPC meeting, so I took some notes and provided that to the board in advance.
How is this okay? Did he vote on it? Thank you. I don't know. I have all this. Okay. What's that top one? Oh, my God.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me. And my apologies for not getting this sooner, but we were working on a truncated schedule. We were working around the clock on this. And what I thought I might do is something a little bit different. The general format of the way I laid this out is similar to the way I've done it in the past, but I wanted to provide a little bit of overall context to our deliberations this year because this year was somewhat unprecedented in terms of the number of projects we got. We got more projects this year than we've ever gotten. And the cumulative amount of them came to over $10 million. Some of them were kind of easy to say we can't do right now or didn't make sense, but we were in a situation this year that's a little bit different than in past years where we had to look at some very good projects and consider deferring them, reducing them or eliminating them completely. So I wanted to give you a little bit of a sense of the process we went through. And the other thing, rather than to, I didn't give you the five-year financials, which we do have because they're very detailed, but I wanted to give you some context also about how much money we have available, is that each year we bring in roughly about $2 million probably at this point in terms of revenue for the fund. It's a combination of what we raised through the CPA surcharge and what we get back as reimbursement for the state. And it's been generally about the $2 million range for the last few years since the amount of the reimbursement has been reduced. It's maybe a little bit higher, a little bit lower. But what we also do is we, each year, we don't spend everything that's in the fund. We've accumulated a little bit of a balance over time just to take care of years where we have a higher level of needs. It's our deliberate strategy not to spend everything every year, but to hold back. So if you looked at what we had available at the beginning of this year in CPC, there was roughly $3 million in the fund that was unallocated, plus about $300,000 of reserves for specific areas that we didn't have specific projects before, plus $2 million coming in. So that's a total roughly of 5.3 million that if we spent everything in the fund, that's how much money we'd spend. And we always want to keep, you know, at least a million and a half in there at the end of the year, just in case a large project comes up the next year that we want to jump on. So that just, I wanted to give you some idea. It's just another factor that we look at. Now, next, what I'd like to do is to go through all of the individual projects, but first I just wanted to see if anybody had any questions or comments about the overall financials. The first project on the list is one that you may have remembered was on there last year. We've, we're contributing $100,000 recommendation to the Affordable Housing Trust. And frankly, the reason is that we want to put some money in there because the housing projects that tend to come up tend to come up not perfectly timed with town meeting, and the town needs a vehicle to jump on some of these projects. And I think over the last year, there's been a couple of good projects that I think have had a very beneficial impact on the town, so we think this is a good contribution. We've gotten good feedback from the Affordable Housing Trust about what they're investing in, what they're spending, and what the model is and so forth, so we feel comfortable contributing with that program for another year, at least. The next project is a continuation, I think, of a series of projects that we've done for senior and elderly housing in North Andover. If you remember, we've funded a number of initiatives over the years, some at Bingham Way, some at other locations. And this is basically a result of collaboration of the CPC and the Housing Authority. And these are the most pressing needs, three projects, actually four, two related to Bingham Way, one unfolds terrace, and one are O'Connor Heights. And one of the things I think you probably know is that one of the challenges with senior housing is that the amount of funding for the state for substantial refurbishment of projects is very limited. For the federal projects, there's usually plenty of money to do these things, but for the state-funded projects, it's very difficult to... The amount of money that's gotten from the state is pretty small, and we decided that if we were to pick a project and a set of projects that has a really significant impact on the quality of life of people, these are the ones. They're very obvious, very tangible. You look at all of the photographs that we've gotten, the pictures we've gotten, been to any of the locations, you see that. So we think that this is money well-spent and something, we want to manage them closely. We want to make sure they get done on time and they get done prudently, but I think it's, we think it's a good investment, so... Moving on, our next project is the library. And again, the library is one of the pre-mor historical buildings in town, and we've funded different projects over the years there. I think everybody fully knows the problems at the library, the leaking. I mean, you can't, you go into the library and you see it's a pretty severe problem. We spent an awful lot of time working with the library board on how to prioritize this, whether to do both the flat roof as well as the clay tiles at the same time. In the end, we chose to defer on the clay tiles because the consultant report basically suggests even though there's some concerns about individual tiles falling off, that they're really, it still has a further useful life, and so we want to continue, wait a while longer to see before that's needed, but definitely to do the flat roof and fix up the problem that exists today in terms of the leakage, which is pretty bad, so... That is for the, yeah, for the flat roof, and it is also for some of the engineering work as well. And then what we would do is do a pretty rigorous maintenance program. I know, and we've talked a lot about that, that we would watch that very closely, and if it turned out we needed to go for the second piece now, we could do that in the next year or two, but if we could last another five, 10, 15 years, then we could leverage the money further. There, I mean, there's a certain amount of maintenance you have to do and you have to watch it, but structurally, most of it is in pretty good shape and...
There's too many, so, don't spending too much time wheeling the clock too far back. The town agreed through its capital improvement plan to invest $150,000 to repair the engineered or flat roof, where a fair amount of the leaking is coming in. In advance of that project, with the recommendation of Steve Foster, we did really an envelope study specific to the roof to see if there were other issues we should be addressing. That envelope study came back and really addressed the concerns in three categories, the flat roof and the tile roof in two sections. One saying that there's some immediate tiles that need to be replaced and some other areas that need to be shored up to make sure those tiles don't fall. We're talking about falling not just as a result of a storm, where some of these tiles can naturally fall as a result of the storm, but also there's just some loose tiles that need to be, need to be addressed. So the CPC has funded, has funded $400,000 this year. We're adding the $150,000 we originally committed to that. The project will be $550,000. It'll cover the life safety issues around the tile roof and the flat roof and the engineering associated with that. I think the second step really is a question of whether or not the balance of that Spanish tile is something that's gonna regularly fall off or something that'll last a fair amount of time. There's still some certain uncertainty about that because the engineering study said it could be here for 20 years, 30 years, or it could start to fall off. So what we've agreed to do through, again, Facilities Department, is do an annual check. I know that Mr. Santilli has issued a roof maintenance, repair, and inspection. IFB went out recently, so we're doing that on a lot of our buildings anyway, so we'll go up on an annual basis or semi-annual basis and make sure the roof integrity remains intact. If we find that the roof, the rest of the tile roof starts to deteriorate or the fasteners start to give way at a pace that doesn't make sense, and it makes sense to do the rest of the roof, the CPC has agreed to revisit this and fund the balance of the roof.
I think that the main concern is that they're secure, especially on the door rails.
Yep, that's all part of the original, sort of what I'll call Phase One.
The next project on our list is the Parson Barner House. It's actually the barn, I goofed, I wanted to say house. It's the Parson Barner Barn structural renovation. And if you may remember, back when the Historical Society first came to us, we had them do a long-term plan study of what the priorities were of things that needed to be fixed. And the initial work was done was a lot related to the flow of water by the Johnson Cottage and so forth. There were severe drainage problems. That work has been virtually completed, and now we're on to some of the subsequent projects on the list. And this was the next project in order of priority was to stabilize the foundation and the upper floors of the barn. And the neat thing is that that will enable the Historical Society to have a lot more programs in the building for students and for other people and use it for multipurpose facilities. So we think we're going to end up getting a twofer out of that, is a preservation of the building, but a far more functional building for the use for many activities, so... The next project is the next phase of the Ridgewood Cemetery restoration. And I think you all remember that we funded the Ridgewood Cemetery for a series of programs over the last four or five years. Again, with Ridgewood, the first thing we asked them to do was to do a long-term plan so that we had the projects in the right order and the right priority. I think everybody is, notices the last very major phase of work that was done off of Salem Street because it's very visible and it really looks great. I mean, I think everybody's extremely pleased with the work, and I think that the board there did a wonderful job stretching the money as far as it did. The next proposed phase, and it's a big one, but it's basically to take the other side of the property, particularly the veterans' area, which everybody's familiar with, with Memorial Day, and do the same thing on that side, is to stabilize it, make sure the slopes work, add trees, clean up the walkway and so forth on the other side. One other thing that, I think two things to mention that I'd like to mention about Ridgewood is, one is that Ridgewood did get the designation for being one of the National Registry of Historical Places, which is a huge deal. It's really something I think they'd be very proud of for the town that we have a cemetery that's considered one of the premier ones in the state. And the other thing is I just want to reiterate that the fact that under mass law, every community has to make a provision for cemeteries, and if the Ridgewood didn't exist, the town would have to make a major investment in its own, so it does provide a quasi-monopolital purpose as well, so... Very good group on the board there. Joe Pelich has done a wonderful job of just making the money go as long as it possibly can. He's made a big difference there, so... The next project, the Kittredge School Playground. If you remember back a few years ago, we decided to take a long-term approach to all the playgrounds in town, and so we're on the third year of a program to contribute $100,000 a year to different playgrounds. Sergeant was the first. Last year, we did Franklin, and this year it's Kittredge, and we will continue over the next five or six years. And everything that I've heard as feedback has been very positive on the approach, and we hope to continue that, so... The next project, and I'm actually gonna hand out a map to everyone. The Leonard Farm Conservation Restriction is a, is a very interesting project, and it's actually a wonderfully opportunistic one, is that the, and this is a case of a collaboration between the town and a third-party organization, similar to what we had on a lot of the original land purchases that the town is doing, is basically Essex County Green Belt is managing this project and working with the landowner to get a conservation restriction on 120 acres of property in North Andover and Bauxford to be preserved in perpetuity. The value of the conservation restriction is north of $500,000, and that's for the property in North Andover. The Essex County Green Belt is raising $50,000, and they're asking for a contribution to the town of $325,000. So basically, for, it's something that has a value of $500,000, we're being asked to pay $325,000, which is terrific. And you can see, the map here shows where the property is. And one of the things that's actually really neat about it is that we will have trail access and parking to the property, and we will get an easement for trails through the property so people can use it for recreational use. So it's not just a conservation, even though we don't own it, we will, we'll have access and use of the property, which we're very excited about, so...
Could you tell everybody a little bit about the Green Belt? I think a lot of people still don't know what that's all about. And it's really exciting.
Yeah, Essex, I mean, we're actually blessed in North Andover with having two large land conservation organizations that, that are the stewards of land in town. And obviously, everybody knows the trustees of reservation with Stevens, Coolidge Place, and Ware Hill, but people don't know as well the Essex County Green Belt. And as the term Essex County goes, they basically own and manage a lot of property throughout Essex County, and there's actually a surprising amount of property that they are stewards for already in North Andover. If all of the land behind the town farm that goes all the way out to Foster Street basically is, is Green Belt property, and their idea is they're a land conservation organization, and they have reservations, as I said, you know, multiple ones in North Andover, there's actually a lot of land, I think by the state forests that they manage as well. So a terrific organization, low overhead, and they, they do things that we're not really able to do because of their, their purpose and function, so...
By the way, it's a really great example. I think this particular project and the method by which it sort of came through the CPC is a really good example from my perspective on, on the kinds of projects and the method that we should use to preserve land. Having a third party participate, remove from some of the... Having a third party participate removed from some of the debate about, you know, political debate, small "P," about someone's property, whose property, what's parcel. This is a group whose interest is to protect land and to preserve it forever, in perpetuity, to make it green space, and this is a great example. I think the value of return here, exactly how big is the parcel again?
It's 120 acres.
120 acres. The cost is several hundred thousand dollars. It makes sense when the alternative could be significant development and the loss of trails, the loss of access. So, I think the way this project came through the process, from my perspective, was a really good example of how projects for open space should come through the CPC moving forward.
John, where is the access? Is it off of Gale Street?
Actually, there's two points of access that... But the more likely one is going to be off of Bruin Hill Road.
Okay.
At the end of Bruin Hill Road, there's room directly in there, and there's direct access to the property. So...
And that's a cul-de-sac, right? So, that's where you would park there?
Yeah, that's where you would park there. Yeah. So, that's that. And I think to add to Andrew's comment, when we did the first few land purchases in North Andover, we had the involvement of Trust for Public Land, so it's a very similar model, and it's so much more convenient for everybody. So, we're delighted, and the people at Green Belt are great, and they're very cooperative and helpful.
Is Bauxford also contributing?
Yes, Bauxford's contributing, yes. Most of the other money that they're going to get is from the Bauxford, I think it's Bolt or the Trails Organization, BTA Bolt. So, yeah. So, the next project I wanted to talk about, and this is a more complex project, and it's not as far along, and it's actually, you know, probably part of it is because we don't have another party that can manage it completely for us. So, I want to give you kind of a reasonable overview of it to let you know what's at stake, but also to tell you that this is not a, by any stretch of imagination, a done deal. It has some hurdles, and it's complicated. First of all, the property that we're talking about is in the old center. It's 45 Milk Street. It is actually the largest single undeveloped and unprotected property in the old center. It is the land that, if you want to know exactly where it is, imagine looking out from the softball field directly into the next property. That is what we're talking about there, right, at Milk Street. It's the very first house on Milk Street with a very large amount of open space behind It's... We consider it to be a very attractive parcel for the town to own because it is in the old center. It can provide recreational use, extension of the fields. It provides conservation use. It has historical significance and so forth. The challenge here is that there is a house on the property as well as the land, and without getting into too much of the details, ultimately, we can't pay any more than the appraised value of the property when we... if and when we purchase it. And we're... What's that?
What's the appraisal?
It's still in process. It's lower than what the owner of the land wants, which is the problem.
Yeah, well, we sold a market for six different ones.
It's... Yeah, well, I don't want to go too much into the details here, but believe me, the asking price is higher than that, much higher than that. But the... Anytime you do an appraisal, it's based on what the development potential of the property is, and there's some questions about what the development potential of the property is that we're still trying to work out. And we think the appraisal needs to go upgrade it because there needs to be a soil review and so forth. So, we think the property has an enormous amount of value. We put this amount in as a marker that would cover both the cost of the land and the cost of the house. We think that there's two options for the house. Is one is to completely sell it off separately, to have the owner sell it off separately, or to have a third party, like the party that purchased the, you know, that we work with, with the veterans' housing a couple of years ago. Yeah, with that team, they've expressed an interest in it, and they would come in and potentially buy the house. And we might contribute a small amount, but they would buy it with their own money and make it available to a veteran. And then, the town would just retain the open space at the back, both for recreational use and for conservation use. So, we have a lot of work to do because what we'd like to do is we'd like to upgrade the appraisal. We'd like to continue to do a little bit more work, understanding what the development potential of the property is, so as order to determine what the real value of the property is. Because right now, as I've said, there's a pretty substantial gap between what the landowner wants and what we think the value of the property is that we have to work out.
Is the barn part of this, or what land you have?
Well, that's... It gets into, without getting into detail, too much detail, the question is, does it have development potential because it's low-lying and it's wet? That's really what it comes down to. Yeah. And that's what we have to work out in good faith, and yeah.
John, what's the acreage on this site?
It's about four acres. It's a little over four acres. So, if, in this district, assuming that there were no restraints on development potential, you could put a subdivision of potentially three or four houses there.
Why, at this early stage, do you feel it's... Do you want to move forward with $1.2 million?
We have to put a marker in. We wanted to put a number in that we don't necessarily... What we're saying is, we'll put a number in, but it cannot exceed the appraisal. The problem is, if we put a number in, and let's say we put a lower number in, I'm making this up just for purposes of discussion, of $600,000, and the appraisal turns out to be $800,000, then we're stuck. We can always start with a higher number. If the appraisal's lower, we're not going to pay more than the appraisal. So, we... To be safe, we didn't want to put a number in that might be marginally low. It's kind of like playing the Price is Right. You know, you could be a little bit under, but you can't be over.
But this is...
Where does the appraisal go down?
It's a little bit of a back and forth. We're...
This has been kicking around for a bit while.
It's been kicking around for a while and again.
And the fact that we don't know if those are wetlands or not, and we're...
Well, frankly, what I would prefer to do, if we were going to talk in detail about it, I'd rather do it in executive session.
Okay.
You know...
Understand, yeah.
Yeah, because there's some complexities that we probably don't want to talk about right here. So, I'd be glad to do that, come back sometime.
Well, then, that raises a concern as well. We're putting it out there that we're going to bring this to town meeting, but we can't discuss it unless we discuss it in an agreement.
Well, if...
So, how do we bring it to the residents for their approval?
Well, the point ends up being is, we don't have the thing done before town meeting. I don't see how we can do it.
Okay.
I mean, unless we have a deal in hand prior to town meeting, it's not going to work. Yeah.
Okay.
So...
And all I'd recommend at that point, I know, John...
Is this the final list yet? Or this is just...
No, no, no. This is... I mean, what would happen is, the... Every other project doesn't really have a contingency associated with it. So, this project does have a contingency, and if we don't reach an agreement with the landowner, we would just drop it from the list. I mean, that's what we would do.
So, your question, Tracy, though, was, you don't know... Because that wasn't answered. You don't know of the four acres, how much of it is already protected anyways?
Correct.
And there's no indication on record, that we have no record...
Well, it's not protected.
It's not protected.
Not protected of wetland.
Right, if it's...
Non-billable is more what I'm...
Correct. I think what you should expect from John, and I think you would agree with this, is at this point, there's just a lot of moving parts to it, and they just want to be prepared. If they didn't get to this meeting or conclude their process without being prepared, then if we then wanted the parcel and things moved along, we'd be unprepared. So, I think what you should expect from John and the committee is, if it moved forward between now and town meeting, he would come back in whether an open session or regular session, provide the detail that you're seeking. At this point, it's too difficult to do that without giving away, you know, really strategy in terms of an approach.
Understand. Yeah, I guess it's surprising to me that it hasn't moved further along since it's been kicking around for so long. You know what I mean?
Fair enough.
But I'm glad this placeholder piece does move along.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's basically the list, so...
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, great, thank you.
So, we're moving on to citizen petitions now. There is a third citizen petition before us this evening. Can that even be addressed where it's...
Yeah, so we received today, received this evening, a request to add an amendment to a zoning article. The signatures were included, I assume. In fact, I see Josh's signature at the bottom, so that would indicate that, in fact, the signatures have been attested to. The board does have the authority.
I actually have the original.
Since it's further than 40 days from town meeting to open the warrant for the purpose of adding the article if they so choose. This would still be required to go through the public hearing process. I haven't looked at the schedule to see if that's possible, but all zoning articles are required to go through a public hearing process. So, this is a citizen petition to be added to amend the zoning bylaw.
And I believe that... Well, he just... But I think John Simons would do what he can to get the proper review through planning, but then it would be on the floor of town meeting. I'm all about ten citizens say they want it on. I have no problem, but I don't make a motion.
I agree. I have no problem, especially because we have the 10 signatures on here, putting it before town meeting. I don't know that I have enough... I haven't had the opportunity to review this enough to feel comfortable giving some type of opinion as far as on the board.
I wouldn't have given an opinion on it, no. I don't think we need to do that either.
But Madam Chair, I would motion that there is a recommended motion, so if I'm doing this correctly, I'd motion that we take this attached article and place it on the warrant for town meeting.
No, so we need to have an...
Do we have to open?
So...
Oh, isn't it already open?
No, so... No, you haven't opened the town meeting warrant. What you would need to do at this point, normally, we go through the process at some point to open the warrant, vote the warrant, close the warrant. Typically, at this point, it's not to add articles. It's just to catch up any of the housekeeping from town council or otherwise. In this case, you'd need to open the warrant, agree to insert this citizen petition that isn't otherwise inserted, and then close the warrant with any other changes you would have made.
So, you want to get to that place in the meeting?
Yes, you can do it then. It's just, I don't think there's an advocate here, proponent here for that particular article, so the article will have to be taken on the merits. So, my interpretation of the bylaw is, it says it's not within the 40 days prior to town meeting. So, the charter indicates no less than 75 days, no more than 75 days, no less than 40 days for the warrant to be completed. Since you're not within the 40-day period, it wouldn't require a unanimous vote because it's not an emergency item. So, you could always add something late in the process. We have, we don't. But if there was an emergency, I don't... This is not an emergency situation, so it would just require a simple majority of the board.
Okay, then. So, then, we're going to move on to the other ones, and we'll open and close it when the timing is...
When the time comes, yeah.
Okay. All right, then, citizens' petition. Article 27, to authorize and appropriate consumer testing services for the benefit of the people of the town of North Andover. Joseph Tullan. And is he before us this evening?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Joseph Tullan. Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Dear members of the Board of Selectmen and voters of the town of North Andover, thank you all for coming and giving me the opportunity to present to you tonight. I am here to testify before all of the Board of Selectmen at tonight's meeting to announce support for the article to establish the benefit of consumer testing services for the town of North Andover's people. Consumer Testing Services Act to provide consumer service training and employment opportunities to voters and visitors of the town of North Andover. Consumer services are employed to train and engage the local marketplace to test and report on the ability of consumers to make informed purchases and act as engaged and well-informed consumers when making purchases and subscribing to services. Using survey research results, the consumer testing employees are equipped to provide purchase information and analysis to the public about the shopping experience and quality of products available to the public of the town of North Andover. If a member of the public would like to know if making a purchase or subscribing to a service is available or provided with good service, the consumer testing service can help them by testing the vendor. Consumer testing services also provide prepaid discounts and reimbursements to all consumers who apply to one of our discount programs. In addition to partial discounts, there are many full, part-time, and temporary employment opportunities to apply to that offer paid training, health, and retirement benefits along with travel expense coverage for all people of North Andover. Consumer Testing Services plans to offer employment opportunities, provide daily discounts and full reimbursement programs to convenience all residents and tourists of the town of North Andover on all purchases made in the town of North Andover. An example of what consumer testing service benefit programs will provide include education, training, employment for the unemployed, volunteers, students, and people seeking adult community-based activities. The operations will also provide charity programs that will offer enrollment to applicants for insured discounts and conveniences to cover consumer activities at retail providers of goods and services otherwise not currently covered or enrolling a retail benefit. The testing services and benefits will be offered to the town of North Andover's residents and tourists to aid their individual and group efforts to make the town of North Andover a great place to live and thrive. The community-based service is set up to provide conveniences and employment to help people who seek to improve the standard of living, quality of life, number of affordable activities, and the appearance of their lives and homes here in North Andover. I support this article with no changes in the text of the article, for a favorable vote ought to pass, to provide benefits, conveniences, and employment to the town of North Andover's voters and visitors. I urge you to support this article with a favorable vote ought to pass.
How in 25 words tells you the decision?
Well, Consumer Services is going to offer benefits to the people of North Andover so that they can be better informed and better able to address issues of inflation or information about products and services that are available to them in the marketplace.
So, it sounds like a service company.
$10 million.
And why are... Why is it being... Why is it on the... Why are you requesting it be on the warrant? That's what I don't understand, and I've worked with this, and I've read it many times, and I know that you're requesting an allocation of $10 million to support this. I don't understand why you're not... Why it's not a private company and you raise money in the marketplace like everyone else. I don't understand why you're asking for $10 million and a vote of town meeting to establish this service corporation.
Well, I want to make this fair and accessible to all people in North Andover.
What is it going to do? Who's going to run it? I don't understand it at all.
Well, I am going to be employing people, and I will be taking an active part in running it, and people will come to it, and they will apply...
What is "it," though? I don't get the "it."
Well, it's an open... It's an open opportunity for people to find out information and then make purchases in the retail environment. So, whether that's making improvements on your home, or mowing your lawn, or buying a new TV, or buying health insurance...
You almost want to create a municipal Angie's List.
Yes, yes. That's a good explanation.
But the town can't give recommends. So, if someone... You want the town to give you $10 million so that a private citizen can come to you and say, who should I use to side my house or my roof? Do my roof?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's what I...
What would the $10 million be used for?
Thank you. I get it.
And so, we fund our police and fire department $10 million. And you're asking for the equivalent of what we would fund our police and fire department for this services company. So, I really... I don't understand the $10 million. I don't understand the 100% daily interest on the $10 million. There's a lot of things that I just don't understand, Mr. Tullan, about what your article is requesting. It seems like, you know, again, to me, it seems like it's in... It should be a private services corporation, or, I mean, it sounds like it's like a Consumer Reports magazine is really what it sounds like. I mean, I can go to Consumer Reports, and I can look at what the best televisions are to buy in the marketplace today, and that costs me, you know, $5 at the... I don't know what it costs in Consumer Reports. at the, I don't know what it costs in Consumer Reports, five dollars at the newsstand or something like that. So I'm not sure why the ten million dollars, what's going to happen with that ten million dollars? And quite frankly, where that ten million dollars is going to come from is another big question. If this is approved at town meeting, how that's going to be spent, how that's going to be managed, and the benefits to the town is still unclear to me.
Okay, well, that's a good, that's a good point, a good question. And what, what the difference between the buying a magazine and Consumer Reports to find out information about a product is that not only will we have that information to provide people, which is going to be based on local opinions, but we're also going to offer rebates to all products that are bought and sold here in North Andover, to anyone who will enroll in one of our rebate programs, and a lot of which will be at full reimbursement.
Okay.
So is that where the ten million dollars comes in? So that ten million dollars is to reimburse?
Right.
People who, so if I buy a TV, your corporation would reimburse me the cost of that if I came to you first and asked which TV to buy?
Yes, if you would fill out a survey which offers us an opinion of what your purchase objective was, and if you were able to achieve that, and if you were satisfied and dissatisfied for any reason, then we could reimburse you in full for that purchase.
I can't imagine that's legal for government to do. I can't imagine.
It's, it's very legal. Anything that are good for people is, is.
Is legal?
It's right here in my speech.
Okay.
That's the legality.
I can't imagine the people of North Andover giving ten million dollars to it, but I suppose we shall find out in May.
Madam Chair, can I ask one final question?
Sure. Please.
Be with me, my eyes are on what they used to be. The, on the very last sentence, or the last sentence, I think there's two sentences, it says the appropriation is ten million dollars with a hundred percent daily interest on the principal balance of the ongoing trust account?
Yes.
So day, a hundred percent interest is compounding, compounded daily?
Right.
So in day two, if you haven't spent any money, it's twenty million?
That's correct.
Okay.[736.82][736.82](laughing)
So, so you would think it would run out, but it actually keeps going on and on and on.
Okay.
So we, so, so we will be living here in North Andover, and our standard of living will constantly improve over time.
Who's paying this twenty million, forty million, sixty million, eighty million, a hundred million? Where's all the money coming from?
Well, it would be drawn from the state appropriation for the town of North Andover.
Wait, Mr. Tullin, do you know how much that state appropriation is?
It's open and unlimited. Whatever, whatever the town agrees upon is what it's based on.
That'd be great if the state gave us whatever we want.
That'd be great. Wonderful.
Mr. Limpert, give us your wish list.[782.32][782.32](laughing) I, I want to say, so, Mr. Tullin, I don't, I don't agree with this, this proposal, but I want to just commend you for the hard work that you've done, because this is something you care about, and you've, you've done your research. I would argue this is not, this is a program that perhaps may be at the federal level, that would apply to all Americans, might make sense, and with economies of scale, it again may make sense, but I don't know that this is, when you look at our community, when you look at the resources we have, the limited resources, our limited ability to levy resources, surely you can see that, while there are many things worth funding, as far as what our municipality is responsible for contributing to, ten million dollars is a lot of money.
Well, I think that you're, you're underestimating the power of North Andover and the power of Massachusetts. I, I mean, we, we have a lot of ability in using our petition system to the state and the state treasury, and all the collection of experiences that we've had as people to know that this amount of money exists in our community.
Can I stop, Mr. Town Manager, pointing information, how much did our town budget increase from this year to the one that we're being, we're proposing right now?
A little more than that, a little over three percent, so somewhere in the mid, two point five million.
Two point five million. So for residents this year who experienced a tax increase of perhaps three hundred dollars, they would have to multiply that by five, four, five, in order to get your ten million dollars. That's just for this brand-new program. People would see an immediate thousand-dollar tax hike at minimum if you have the median property. I mean, surely you can see that we as a community.
Well, I would not, I would not expect any increase in taxes whatsoever through this program.
You would ask for a ten million dollar program and not expect any increase in taxes?
No, I don't believe in increasing taxes at all. Well, I think that what you should do is you should take the, the entitlement of North Andover to the state treasury and say that you want the town of North Andover's appropriation to be repealed to the extent of this ten million dollar appropriation. Otherwise, you, you would file this as a, as a petition that would go into the formal session of the General Court of Massachusetts, and then they would appropriate, appropriate it for it independently, as you have filed petitions in the past.
Okay. Well, I thank you, Mr. Tullin.
Has there been success with this program? Yeah, I think that, that this program is very successful throughout the country. People offer discounts all the time. They don't do it ex.
But I mean, that you were able to get the community to contribute such large sums of money to the program, have you had any success with that?
Well, this isn't, this isn't a community-funded, a community-funded initiative. It's, it's a benefit for the community which is funded from lawmaking.
There's ten million dollars coming from that. I mean, that's community, that's from the community.
Yeah, it is community-funded, right?
It's a tri-animal.
Oh, don't. I, I, okay. Well, I thank you very much, Mr. Tullin.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you.
Just revisited at town meeting.
Letting me speak, and, and that we will, we will have this at town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to Article twenty-eight, and that would be to see if we will eliminate the local meals tax, option meal tax, Dan Novak, I think is the petitioner.
Hello, good evening. I don't really have a speech made up, but I do have a couple facts. I think the petition itself pretty much speaks for itself. Back in two thousand eleven, in the midst of the two thousand eight financial meltdown, the state of Massachusetts decided to allow cities and towns to impose an additional local options, meals tax on any meals that are bought in restaurants or prepared hot meals like at Butcher Boy or similar stores as well. So that tax got implemented in two thousand twelve. Ever since the tax has been implemented, the town of North Andover has had a surplus, of which the tax itself has only made up a fraction of that surplus. In two thousand fifteen, the revenues for message, for North Andover were eighty-five million dollars. The revenue from the tax was just over five hundred thousand, which means that the tax itself represents about one-half of one percent of the revenue for the town of North Andover. Because the financial situation is now much better than it was, employment is up, the economic situation of the nation's better, I don't feel that this tax is any longer needed, and therefore I think we can do without it, and it would be a benefit to our restaurants. It could hopefully maybe even attract more business to the town if we eliminated the tax, so.
Madam Chairman, it's a half a million dollars.
It's a half a million dollars.
Stan, where do you put a half million?
The half a million dollars represents less than, it's a fraction of the surplus that we have. Therefore, you don't have to cut anything.
This is his budget.
Oh, okay.
We suggest we cut the half million.
Don't, we don't.
Sorry, your host.
But, but it's not going to cost us any money. It's, it's, it's going to come out of the surplus. Cut it out of the surplus.
What surplus are we talking about?
The budget already, the half million dollars is already in his budget. You're going to have to go to town floor and tell the school department, you need half a million dollars back. Good luck, pal, really.
In, in two thousand fifteen, our revenues were eighty-five million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Our expenditures were, no, I'm sorry, the, the revenues were eighty-seven million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. The expenditures were eighty-five million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. It's a difference of two million, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Therefore, we aren't having to cut any services, any jobs, anything, because it is coming out of the surplus.
When's the last time you heard of an override? How, how are all these buildings being built, the fire station, the police station?
Out of the general revenues.
Right, because why? Because we got a half million dollars more a year going in there. This is, this is a trivial, no.
No, 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 this is one-half of one percent.
I don't care what this, it doesn't matter. People are paying it now, and it's, it, it means an awful lot to this community, a half a million dollars each year. We can plan.
Now, now, I have not put in the budget when, when it should be eliminated, and I was thinking that it probably makes sense that it starts at the beginning of the next fiscal year, so that that can be planned for.
It's a half million dollars we're used to using and then.
Well, well, it's a half a million dollars that from sixteen forty-six to two thousand twelve, we never used. So it's something that we should be able to wean ourselves off of very easily.
Mr. Novak, that logic, though, could be applied to every tax that we.
It, it could, but this is one of the smallest taxes that the town has.
So then a.
This is actually less than what we get from excise taxes on automobiles. In fact, it's far less than what we get from excise taxes on automobiles.
So when on.
The, the, but, but why, why should we punish just restaurants?
You're not punishing the restaurants, it's part of the meals tax.
So can I, Don, can I, so I, somebody who, the prior two times that this came up before town meeting, this was actually the first time I ever spoke at town meeting was against passing this, and we worked really hard.
Yes, we did.
Some of us were on the board, some of us weren't on the board, and it came up in a year where I felt personally proponents didn't do their job in explaining what that money specifically would be used for, that they were advocating the tax increase simply because we could. Three, four months later, it was brought up again. It failed the first time, at a special town meeting it was brought up. After being defeated by seven votes, it then passed by seven votes. Again, I was opposed to it because philosophically we, we had a balanced budget. Both times I felt proponents, the onus was on them to explain what they would use that money for. Four years later, you're talking about repealing the tax, which, I mean, at the time I said I, I was not inflexible, and I would look at it on a case-by-case basis. The onus now is on anyone who wants to repeal it to identify a half million dollars that they think should be cut from the budget. Just because you're saying last year we had a surplus, well, next year what happens when we have that tough winter, and it turns out that we have to send out plows the way that we did last winter? I mean, this is a minor.
Even last, even last year, when we had to send out all those plows, and we had the worst winter on record, we still had a surplus.
And in turn, though, we had the opportunity to get the flexibility from these funds, where we've been able to develop programs that I don't think we even ever considered. They were never articulated the prior time that they were proposed.
Well, well, I actually believe that.
And I think that this money, and respectfully, I want to go back to the point that the onus, I think, is on anybody proposing to repeal a tax, just like the onus is on them if they're ever proposing a tax increase, to say what it's going to fund. This board does not.
I would actually disagree with you. I, I would think that, that it is up to the citizens to determine what they want to have taxed and what they do not want to have taxed, because it is, it is on our right to decide what we are going to have taxed. So therefore, if the citizens decide that this is not a tax that we want, well, then the onus is going to go back to the board, to the various boards in town, to determine how that they can then represent that budget. Because if, if four years ago we voted down this tax, this is revenue that you wouldn't have, and this wouldn't even be discussed now.
We did, we did. The citizens of this community, as, as Selectman DeColagero, and I was a leading pro, anti the meals tax, one of the leading advocates against it. I worked very, very closely with the North Andover Merchants Association against it, with the gentleman to my left and the gentleman to my right. We were three of the, the most vocal and hard-working anti-mails-tax people in town. So I'm very, very familiar with this. As, as Selectman DeColagero stated, we, we, it was shot down by seven votes, and a few months later it was resurrected, and it won by seven votes. You know, the people spoke both times, you're bringing it up for a third time, and we'll see how it plays out on the floor, I suppose.
I don't see any why.
But I think that, I think that, that Selectman Stewart and Selectman DeColagero do make valid points, that now that it's here, where do we cut?
Well.
Well, and I'd like to, so I also worked hard back in two thousand eleven to not pass this meals tax. And my argument was to, was similar to yours, was it was going to hurt the restaurants in town. So I, I did some checking around, and based on the taxes that we've collected, so over the last three years, we've gone, and I, my laptop has died.
Should be about one and a half million over three.
Well, no, no, my point is that every year that tax that we've collected has gone up, reflecting in that also the revenue, the restaurants have gone up considerably.
Right, because.
So we're talking sixty-three million, sixty, true, but my point is that it hasn't.
Well, as the economy got better, people started going out to eat more.
And that was one of my big concerns, it has not.
And just because it doesn't hurt doesn't mean that you should tax it.
Well.
And, and, and think of it this way, if every other town surrounding us has this meals tax, and we're the one town without it, that's going to send a signal out to anyone that wants to start a new restaurant, that North Andover is the place to go to start a restaurant, and we could be the restaurant town.
Mr. Novak, can I ask you a question, though?
It still hasn't prevented, I think.
In that, in that case, though, there's still a benefit. If you're a North Andover resident right now, you can stay in North Andover, spend your money in North Andover, and know that instead of paying another community's tax, you could pay this community's tax. I mean, surely you go to eating restaurants outside of North Andover still?
Absolutely.
So then that hasn't hurt you.
But, but if, if I can go to a McDonald's in Andover and pay more, or if I can go to McDonald's in North Andover and pay less, well, then why don't I go to the North Andover?
Or you could go, you could go to McDonald's in North Andover and know your taxes going towards funding your children's schools and your roads, or you could go to the Andover McDonald's.
Or I buy a house in North Andover and pay a whole lot more towards those roads and schools.
But I'm simply, you're, you're employing this logic, not me. I mean, you're saying that.
Compared to what I am paying in property taxes, the meals tax is very small. And compared to our budget, the meals tax is very small.
Well, it sounds like you want to keep it.
It's, it's one-half of one percent. It's one-half of one percent of the budget.
I think your argument is based on principle, and I commend you for that, and I absolutely commend you for that. And again.
The over-under at town meeting is going to be failed by two hundred votes, so let that down.
Well, I, I would, I would like to see what, what the people of North Andover vote for.
And we're all going to have an opportunity to see that, and that.
It's going to be on. It'll be, we'll put it on.
Right.
It's required.
It'll be on, so.
It's on.
I thank you, Mr. Novak.
Thank you very much.
And we'll continue this on the floor, I am sure. Moving on to consent items. Committee in regards to selecting an in-house council.
I, I think that this is an awesome idea, Andrew, so I just want to say I'm so psyched that you're, you're doing this, so, and that we were able to get the two boards to work together on this.
Well, I think it's, we're beginning to explore, and it has been put in the budget for FY twenty seventeen. Do you want to speak to this?
Sure. The idea of a committee actually was, was a suggestion, so they came out of the last couple of conversations. So I first introduced it as part of the five-year forecast, did not get into great deal detail in fairness, talked about it sort of thirty-thousand-foot level, brought it up at another meeting a little more detailed, but again, not in great detail, and incorporated into the budget and the language in the executive summary in the budget, and the budget itself includes two line items within the town council line item, a town council, sort of town council line item, and an in-house council line item within the budget, and there's some narrative to that within the executive summary and throughout the budget. So the, the concept which has been discussed, certainly at the school committee and with the selectmen to a certain degree, is that we have a council line item, we've historically spent, it varies, and we can talk about that if you'd like, I included a memo to sort of give you a general overview of my thoughts on this and the historical spending, but certainly predating my arrival, the average spending was north of one eighty-five, I think one sixty, and, and one of the three years predating my arrival, another year was close to two sixty, another year two twenty, so I think it'd be fair to say that we, we appropriated on average about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We have made a conscious decision over the last four years to be mindful of when we use council, not as a criticism or not to put the town at risk, but, but there are ways that you can make sure that that's not the first call you make, and so what the board has been aware of in multiple meetings, when I've provided it to the board in terms of an update of where we stand in town council spending, is over the last four years, we've reduced town council spending to an average of a hundred or slightly under a hundred over the last four years, each year, which means in the last four years, we've spent a quarter million dollars. Which means in the last four years, we've spent a quarter million dollars less in town council spending than we did in the previous three years. If I added four years to four years, you're talking nearly a half a million dollars less. But I don't look at that as an end, or as sort of where we should finish as it relates to this. The bottom line is we have competent counsel, and they should be recognized what they are, competent attorneys that help us in a lot of matters. We have folks that help us on labor issues, folks that help us on land use matters, and folks that help us on a wide variety of items, personnel matters and the like. But it makes sense, because they're in private practice, that those rates go between a hundred and eighty dollars and two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, depending on who you use. The schools incorporated in this, they pay close to two twenty-five, we have one eighty and two hundred dollars an hour. So logically speaking, in terms of creating some additional efficiency, there are times when, quite frankly, there are times when I walk in, as Ray knows, when I walk in Ray's office, and I'll say, gee, you have some experience in this, what's your thoughts on it? The same thing can happen with town council, but at an average between sixty and sixty-five dollars an hour, because they're going to be in-house, and they're going to be employed by us, which means you have thirty-seven and a half hour access to the kind of expertise on some matters, not every matter. You have a sophisticated, excuse me, complicated land use matter, we're likely to use the primary counsel we use today, he handles most land use matters. But there's an opportunity to get, really in essence, three hours' worth of legal advice for what we pay an hour for today. That's the concept. Is it money-saving? I don't see it as money-saving, and it's never been promoted as a money-saving initiative. It's spending the same amount of dollars and getting more legal service in return. That's efficiency. So there are a number of different ways that we've approached, I appreciated Mr. Novak's comments about where we are budgetarily, because it's been a conscious effort by this board and many folks in town to recognize where we were financially in the first ten years of this decade. Two negative years of free cash, no reserves, and inability to deliver the programs our residents expect. And we've made a conscious effort to do that in the last five years. And every time we do that, we're, we're willing to look at different ways than just traditionally raising fees and taxes. And so this is another example of that. One was a conscious effort to make sure we don't use town council as often, and two, now, to find a way that every time we ask town council a question, at least on a vast majority of the times, we're spending sixty-five or sixty dollars an hour versus spending one hundred and eighty to two hundred dollars an hour. That's the concept. Not savings, but efficiency. I would expect that if you look at your budget as proposed, there's approximately a hundred and, I think, ten thousand dollars for salary line item, that if you do the math, it works out to be somewhere between sixty-one, sixty, sixty-two dollars an hour. The schools would be funding about forty percent of that total. And then the balance of the dollars within the budget would be set aside for those special cases when we're dealing with land use matters. For instance, we have one pending today, or on an ongoing basis. And I would fully expect it's likely that it would be the existing counsel today who has a background in land use, and we would use him for those matters. That's the concept.
So do you see an in-house counsel remaining busy for thirty-seven and a half hours? Is it truly a, a full-time position, or could you hire someone in a part-time, other than like the way we do it today, but a part-time role?
I think part of the reason we're combined with the schools is to answer that question, quite frankly, because it, it certainly guarantees that's the case. I do think that's the case. One of the things we're sort of sensitive to today is, is how often do we call? Do we, no, we're not, again, we're not doing anything, we, we haven't had, to be arguably, that we've had actually less lawsuits in the last five, four or five years under the method we're using. I think that's not a function of what we're doing, that's sometimes just the circumstance. I believe we could occupy that time, but certainly as a combined effort. So the schools have two primary focuses, they have regular sort of ongoing legal stuff like we do, every, it could be a personnel matter, and then they have items involved with special education. They would retain their special education counsel, because that, not unlike the land use, is a very specific discipline. It would allow us the opportunity to make sure that person has occupied the full amount of time. Again, it does give us the ability today to walk into an office and ask a question. We just typically, this is in almost every community, you typically don't pick up the phone when there's a little bit of concern about the hundred and eighty or two hundred dollars an hour in fifteen-minute increments than what it means. So to a certain extent, that's, that's what it addresses. But I think combined with school, yes, you would fill the time.
Ma'am Chairman, the only, the only question I have is, it's, it's not going to save us money. I don't want to find out a year from now that it's costing us three times more than we're doing it for. I, I mean, it's a good process to start. Who's going to do the, the accounting work? Who's going to do the typing of letters? The lawyer, I mean?
I think, I think, again, that's all incorporated within the staff.
See, I, I have a problem on doing something, I don't know what the actual costs are. It, it could be very close, it could be a little bit more, but is it going to be doubled?
I'm not confused by the cost. The cost is, they would put an amount in there for a special counsel, and an amount in there for this person. They will have a salary, the salary is listed in the budget. The salary when added to the special counsel fees totals, the exact amount of the budget was placed in the previous year, a hundred and, I'm going to be off slightly, so I apologize, somewhere in the hundred and sixty thousand dollar range. So much for special counsel, so much for regular counsel.
So what, what, what is the actual job?
I think you're talking administrative help.
What is, yeah. What is the actual, actual job of this counsel? Town meeting, all the small stuff?
So let me give you, well, not just the small stuff, but.
The administration's out of wing, I'm sorry.
Well, if they're writing a memo, and they wanted to assign that to the selectman secretary or my secretary, and there's capacity to do that, in some cases, I type my own memos today at whatever I get paid an hour. So it's a combination of those. I'm not, we're not trying to build a kingdom here and add administrative support and, and build it up so that there's.
I would expect the attorney to write their own.
I would say a fair amount of that, depending on what it is, to do their own legal research. We're not looking to hire paralegal, we're not looking to hire, you know, this is the cost it is in the budget.
And, and this is in the budget, too. This, this discussion right now is just about how we're going to pick the person that we're already budgeting for.
Well, it was asked to place on the agenda the selection process, and from that, felt it was important to have a full vetting of the discussion before we proceeded.
I'm still a little bit confused, so let's go over the salary again.
Yep.
The salary and the benefits. So how much would that be?
The salary is listed as one hundred and ten thousand. Schools, again, I apologize, don't have it directly in front of me. The schools will fund of that one hundred and ten thousand in the forty-two to forty-seven thousand dollar range.
Okay, so what about benefit costs?
So the benefit costs are borne the same way we had any employee today, that borne by the health insurance line item would handle the health insurance cost.
I know, but we don't have to pay for health insurance and retirement and everything else.
I understand.
Our, our special counsel or our counsel.
So if I take the, if I took a hundred and ten thousand dollar salary and added twenty percent to it for the purpose of benefits, and divided that on a cost per hour, I'm somewhere south of seventy dollars an hour. I'm paying a hundred and eighty dollars an hour today. It's a hundred dollar, it's an order of one and a half to two magnitude difference between having an in-house person with benefits versus paying someone at a current rate per hour we have.
But we don't, but we don't pay our counsel forty or thirty-five plus hours a week. It's, it's on an ad, on a need-be basis.
It's on a need-be basis, I understand, but it's three times, so you simply do the math. So the question to Mr. Valencourt's point is, if I took thirty-seven and a half, and the rate is one-third, then, then in essence, town council would have to work one-third of a week to equal what this person's working thirty-seven and a half hour a week. And so, so the point is, town council only has, if it's fifteen hours a week or twelve hours a week, we get to that total. We have a budget, I'm not suggesting we exceed that budget. I think there's some misunderstanding of that total. We have a budget, and we wouldn't exceed the total of that budget.
Okay, so we have the employee at a hundred and ten thousand plus the benefits.
Yep.
Okay. And, but you, you have indicated to me that we will still be using special counsel.
Of course.
So we've got to add that to the hundred and ten plus.
Correct, yep.
And then, of course, the school department, I'm not sure what their legal budget is.
The portion of the budget that's associated with regular, what I would call non-special counsel is between forty-two and forty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay. And of course, they have their special counsel, as you said, special, and they have specific that, that I would not think that our in-house town council would have that experience.
I've already said that's special.
Okay, no, I understand.
Yep.
So we're at a one hundred and ten plus benefits, and.
You subtract the forty-two to forty-seven funded by the schools.
Okay, but, no, but they, they're all special counsels.
No, 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 they'd be with us.
No, on that, I'm trying to add up the whole thing. That's what I'm trying to add up, that's why. So you've got the hundred and ten plus the benefits, which you said is twenty percent, so.
It's one view, it may not be, but that's, that's certainly conservative.
Okay, plus our special counsel, plus.
Minus forty-seven thousand. It's not plus. That we don't, so separate the school's special counsel, because it doesn't come out of their budget.
So you're saying that you're going to save.
No, I didn't say save. What I said was, if you, if you take a hundred and ten thousand dollars plus benefits, so let's use a figure just for the sake of round, one twenty-five, and I take the forty-five thousand off that the school is going to fund for this position.
Right.
Okay, we're at eighty thousand. Now, let's assume our special counsel will be thirty-five or forty thousand, based upon my review of the bills, for those items that are not regular and traditional. Then you'd add that to the eighty thousand, you'd end up about a hundred and ten thousand. We're averaging, again, we had an extraordinary year last year, I saw from town council, he made a recommendation, he identified the eighty-nine thousand. I can tell you the eighty-nine thousand was a little bit of an anomaly, in that I don't think we've ever been at eighty-nine thousand. But I would expect we'd average, but maybe one-ten. So between special and in-house counsel, average a net of one-ten, excuse me, one-twenty, and I think on average, we should expect to spend between one-oh-five and one-ten if we didn't do it. So it's not a cost savings.
Well, so could you tell us exactly how much it will cost?
It's not a cost savings, but it's greater access to legal services, because we have an in-house counsel.
But could you still tell us what, what the cost will be?
I just did. I, I don't think.
No, total between, I mean, the taxpayers look at money, they don't say, well, that's school money, I don't count that. They look at all of them money.
But I don't, but the, the schools are already spending money on special counsel for, this has nothing to do with that. The schools are already spending money on special counsel, I can't even tell you the name of the counsel. It does, it comes out of the school budget, and from my opinion, has no part of this conversation. They pay it out of their budget, and they hire a special person who is, who has a special education experience in terms of legal work. I don't know how much they pay for that person, and that hasn't been considered at all as part of this conversation. It's not part of the town's legal budget, it's within the school department budget.
What's appealing to me for this, this program is, and you said this isn't about cost savings, it's about making our government better. And so you're, you've asked us, and I think it's a worthy ask, to put in-house legal counsel, so you have this resource at hand, and as a result, it will also cleave a piece of the outside counsel expenses that we have. It's not going to eliminate it, it's just going to cleave a chunk, and you're going to have as a result, somebody that you can have access to without obstacle. As someone who's been in a, in a municipal position before, I mean, I see the value of that. I mean, I'm sure your employees, from Lori on down, think that there's a value in that, that's why you put this in. And the fact that we're doing it with our schools, again, we're not saving money, but this is about good governance, right?
I think anytime you can add a skill, so we are, although we are government, we're like any, any other organization, sometimes I don't think folks look at, the local government is similar, but they are. We benefit from dynamic human resources. The more skills we have at the table, the better off we are. Now, we don't, I think this board has known, in five years, I am remarkably sensitive to adding staff. We have added very few, if any, staff, even when things have gotten better, and we spent a tremendous amount of time reducing staff in the first ten years. We haven't gone back and added them back, we're sensitive to it. But every time we can add a qualified person to the table, it's helpful. This is an opportunity to add someone who will be here full-time, who adds a level of expertise we don't possess, and will do so at, at, or slightly more, let's say, one-ten versus one-twenty, could be the same cost, certainly not less money, but provides that resource at the table thirty-seven and a half hours a week. I call, from my perspective, it adds effectively, effectiveness and efficiency to what we do, because without paying additional dollars, we're getting more resources.
Karen, and you're a savvy manager, Andrew, but I'm sure you encountered this question more times than you'd like, where you weigh, I'm not sure about something, but is it worth asking outside counsel, given the expense that, that finding the answer would be? I mean, this eliminates that in most instances, I'm sure. So it makes you a stronger town manager. In that sense, it makes, I mean, that has to go all the way down to every department head as well, and every employee.
Again, there, there are communities that do this, some spend more, some spend less. There are communities that don't do this. I, I think it is the appropriate time to do it, because I think it's an opportunity for us to get more resources and more access to a professional resource at approximately the same cost we fund today. And so that value judgment, for me, it's not savings, it's not.
It's clearly not savings, and that's the part.
Yeah, but I've never addressed it as that. I've addressed it as efficiency.
No, you probably, but it's.
Put it to access, access to a resource. I know myself, I've had questions that I've been reluctant to tend to, to the counsel, because I don't want to, you know, I'm afraid, this is a simple question, am I going to incur this huge bill for asking this question? If I, if we had someone available to us, that we could just send a quick email to.
Where are we going to find somebody for a hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Well, that's, that's the challenge, that's why this committee is being put together.
It's going to have to be on the entry level, so it's going to be learned by experienced.
It may not be on the entry level, it may be a truly seasoned professional on the other end. One never knows. You never know. Maybe some amazing person in town will come forward and do it all pro bono.
There you go.
Just kidding.
I rescind my request.
Just kidding. But we're hoping to find the most qualified candidate of all, which is why we want to create this joint committee.
Schools.
With the schools.
That probably.
As well as Kathy Darby and Jennifer Price and Andrew.
I do like the collaboration with the schools.
Yes.
Honestly, I, I really would prefer to see just a more detailed breakdown of costs.
Time will, time will tell. Time will tell.
It's hard for me to support something where I, I still think we need more detail than just off-the-cuff numbers.
Understand.
That's not North Andover. We tend to, we tend to ferret out every ten thousand, every this, just to, to, to be able to use that money in other places, but.
For this consent item, we are looking to just establish this committee, this committee.
Correct. And we have, for.
This is for just the members of our board that we would want, and then they'll bring their own members in.
Right, we were looking for the chairmans of both the selectmen and school committee, an additional member from each committee board, as well as Andrew Mailer, our town manager, superintendent Jennifer Price, and HR Director Kathy Darby as well.
Can we just go back up over the procedure? So we put the committee together, and they find somebody that they, everybody agrees to, but then it still has to pass town meeting.
It's already in the budget, the budget has to pass town meeting.
That committee would have to propose the recommendation.
Correct.
To this board, and this board, this is simply a search committee, this board has the ultimate say over who is the appointment.
We do, this is our appointment.
This is correct, it's, it's correct.
This is simply the interview.
This is just strictly as the search committee, exactly.
So it still has?
Still has to come through this board for approval.
I wouldn't recommend putting, doing anything in terms of a search until it passes town meeting.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's just establishing that, not even, oh, the chair will change by then too. We didn't take that into account. The chairs will change.
No, no, not right after town meeting, no, not till, not till the fiscal year.
Yeah, like at the end, at the end of July, so.
June 30.
June 30.
So the budget passes and then the search committee kicks off.
Right away and then we just stay at that way?
And then you've got somebody in place by the next budget cycle.
Yeah, somewhere early in the, but it doesn't have to be.
Which is the same time as the chair rotates.
Okay, so that's okay?
The only activity on the board I would expect is the circulation of a job, a draft job description that the board could review and maybe get together once to make sure they agree. But in terms of actual action, review, decision-making, all of that, I would wait until after town meeting.
And so what we could do is, we could, in the motion, we could just make a motion for the, the board's chair and then an additional person to be representatives.
Right, but we don't, but what if someone, what if the second person ends up chair?
I would think almost all, this is...
You could say chair as of June 1st, 2016, and then that chair.
Yeah, but it'd be fiscal, it'd be...
When are you changing the board chair?
Huh?
When are you changing the board?
We should change the board chair.
It's in July.
In July, last meeting in June.
I, I would expect, this is not, I would expect if the job description's done and it's posted shortly after May 10th. This is not, this is.
All right.
A review of applications, a reduction to a pool of a reasonable amount, an interview, maybe a second interview, it can probably be completed before all of that's done. I don't think that should be in a pen.
I apologize.
All right, so I'll make a motion if we're ready for that. I'll move the board of selectmen, select Tracy Watson and Phil Tocallagero to serve as the board's representatives on the selection committee to hire in-house counsel.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, but I still reserve the right to look over all the, look over the math and perhaps even have the finance committee study the math as well.
Okay, moving on to appointments this evening.
Wow. Every piece of electronic time they have is dead, so I don't even know what pattern is.
It's okay.
Which is okay.
Twenty days.
No, he hasn't sat, he gets all nervous and jittery yet.
We still got a lot on this agenda, so we're moving right along.
He's like a...
So we're looking for motions on the appointments.
So the subcommittee met with Raymond De Rice prior to last meeting. He's actually a really thoughtful gentleman, lives out on Cricket Lane, asking to join our cable TV advisory committee. He's a pretty broad legal background. Perhaps he could apply to be our city solicitor, our town, town solicitor, town attorney.
Oh, city solicitor? Do you forget where you live? That'd be a town.
But, so he recently moved to town after having a stint of professional career in London because the cable TV advisory committee does deal with negotiating contracts and that's coming up. We felt like he would have a skill that.
Great.
Would enhance that board dramatically. So I think that this subcommittee confidently presents his name before the board for appointment.
Great.
He was full of enthusiasm and very knowledgeable man, I think he'll be a great asset to that committee. So I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next one we have is Michael Zanakis to the Emergency Management Agency. I think he's a terrific choice because when there is a terrible emergency, there's a lot of food type of issues, getting food to people who need food, and I think with his background and his energy, I think he would be a great asset to that committee. And I see nods from...
For any committee, actually.
For any committee, exactly.
Exactly.
Even just his professional background with...
I was gonna say with the plowing, with trucks.
He has such a strong understanding, every time we have anything come up, he's such a...
He's, he's a great candidate.
He's absolutely a great candidate.
So I would move approval for Michael Zanakis.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Then there's the last one.
Oh, that's an easy one.
This one's an easy one too, of course, Terry Holland to the Youth and Recreation Council.
Isn't this a retread, isn't he coming back to it?
He's, he's a terrific guy and so pro North Andover, so pro youth, I mean, we couldn't ask for a better candidate. He gives so, so much of himself personally, financially, everything to this, to this community. So I would move approval for Terry Holland.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As I say, every time we appoint someone, this great community of ours would literally come to a grinding halt.
You do.
If not for the volunteers who step up and keep us going.
Yes, you do that at every meeting, and we do make a point of thanking our volunteers on a regular basis.
Yes. Request of the festival, festival, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired. The festival committee to use the town common on May 22nd from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM for sheep Do I have a?
Would you like me to write it down?
No. Moving right along.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that for you. Move approval.
Oh.
No, you got it.
Move approval, move approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yay! That would be May 22nd.
Did you, in the motion, was to waive fees?
Oh, yes.
And close streets.
Waive fees and close streets.
There's a motion.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Yeah.
Second, so do we have to actually say it?
Yeah, you actually say it.
Oh, you want me to say the whole, okay. To, okay, to close Massachusetts Avenue from Oscar Street to Academy Road to traffic from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM and to waive all permit fees.
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM.
Friendly amendment, second?
6:00 AM.
Second.
What is that again?
It does say 7:00 AM.
It does say traffic from 7:00.
You want?
Traffic, yeah. That's the word.
But your 6:00 AM is already approved.
7:00 AM to 6:00 PM for traffic and waive all fees is the amendment.
Great. Friendly amendment, good, all those in favor?
Mr. Cogan.
Oh, one more.
Just one more, I don't know if you addressed it, but about enforcement of the ADA compliance of the handicap parking.
No, you did that through the police department.
Okay.
We're good. We're just waiving all your fees.
Okay.
Enforcement.
Enforcement is enforcement, right. Okay, we are moving now on to, I love sheep sharing, but to approve and, oh, the grant of easement for RCG North Andover Mills and for Machine Shop Village.
So this was part of the sign project.
Yes.
That we introduced some time ago, that the signs entering Machine Shop Village have been placed around the area and then a kiosk.
Yes.
And so the kiosk is being situated on High Street by one in its essence RCG property, so they're giving access to that property law for the kiosk.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Move the board of selectmen, approve and sign the grant of easement for RCG North Andover LLC for the Machine Shop Village information kiosk, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the request from Gene Enright, our Assistant Director of Community Economic Development, to waive the permit fees for the installation of the Machine Shop Village kiosk.
So moved.
Now you're stuck, yeah.
Do I have a second? I know I'm stumbling. Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the request from Steve Foster, our Facilities Director, to waive building permit fees for the Stevens Estate second floor bathroom innovation project.
So Madam Chairman, as you may know, through the CPC and through some of the own funding of the Stevens Estate, there's been a longstanding interest to want to improve the bathrooms up at the Stevens Estate so that the facility will get more overnight use. This is the first such project that is funded by the CPC, so Facilities Director is working with Juana Wallett, who's the Director of the Stevens Estate, to make sure that the project is consistent with the estate's history and provides a nice upgrade to one of the bedrooms up there.
Great. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Moving on to delegate to the cable TV, did we just do that?
Delegate.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, okay.
So the cable, we're approaching the point in which we're going through the renewal or ascertainment process for the renewal for one of the cable television contracts, I believe it's Verizon. So this vote would allow you to delegate the cable, to the cable TV advisory committee the task of conducting cable division license renewal public hearings and proceedings.
Must say that they did an outstanding job the last time.
And, okay, so I'll move to the board of selectmen, delegate to the cable television advisory committee the task of conducting cable television license renewal public ascertainment hearings and proceedings pursuant to, is that Mass General Law 47?
Yes.
Mass General Law 47, USC 546 and 207, CMR 3.00 for the purpose of further identifying the town of North Andover's cable-related needs and interests.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're voting to transfer money from our Special Education Stabilization Fund.
So we established a Special Education Stabilization Fund. We're the third in the Commonwealth to do so. Last year, we set aside $750,000. It was linked to the financial reserve policies which both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen approved, actually approved two years ago and modified and approved again last year. The Special Education Stabilization Fund was intended to protect against a change in the level of services being delivered by the North Andover Public School System in cases where there was an unforeseen cost associated with special education. The role of the school district in this case is to report on a regular basis the status of, of the cost of special education and to be able to identify any extraordinary or specifically unforeseen costs associated with special education. We worked on, we meet, as you folks know, on an every-other-week basis with the school department. They've consistently updated us on the status of special education cost, became aware that there would likely be some level of requirement to dip into the $750,000. A couple of months ago, I know they've been updating the Finance Committee as well. We received formal notice from the Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Mealy, supported by Jen Price, that they would need $150,000 from the Special Education Fund. You may recall that the Financial Reserve Fund says that in any two-year period, they cannot tap into the fund by more than $400,000. If it's 151-year, then the next year must be no more than $250,000. The idea was to perpetuate the fund, that there wouldn't be a run in the fund all in one year. I think the schools have recognized that. I'd expect that the Finance Committee would add to their agenda and approval as well. This also requires school committee approval. So if the school committee, board of selectmen and Finance Committee approve it, then it would appear as a special town meeting, a single warrant item within the regular town meeting at the annual town meeting on May 10th. So I support this recommendation for $150,000 transfer from the fund.
And as do I, so I would move approval. I think this is a great example of this, this fund doing its job, so it doesn't impact the school's budget and make them be hunting for where they're going to find the money. I think, I think it's great.
You too. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. It's great.
Just to repeat the mechanism here, because I know there was some confusion, I know you folks have more experience than, than some folks. So, so the idea of requiring a special town meeting within a regular, is that if you propose some appropriate dollars at an annual town meeting, they become available on the following July 1? In order to make sure that the school department has the funds within the current fiscal year, our moderator will have to recess town meeting at some point, probably one or two articles in, open a special town meeting around 7:15, and I'm taking some license here and some estimates, around 7:15, address that single article that would be in the special town meeting warrant, let's assume it's approved. It would then be closed, the special, the special town meeting, and would return back to the annual town meeting wherever we left that off.
So, Mr. Tomager, does that mean that our town moderator gets paid for two annual town meetings and one special town?
Whoa!
Oh, now you're worrying about the $100,000.
There's a provision for special town meeting.
I think we're gonna negotiate a salary on that.
Wow!
I think we should ask it to the council.
And I think we should get a portion of it from the school department to pay for it.
So Andrew, can I ask, so that, that means the balance of that stabilization fund will drop to $600,000?
Yes.
Yep. And so, refresh me, so in our budget, there's no, we aren't continuing to add money, money to that.
But I think at some point we'll revisit, we'll take a look at how the fund's use has been, make sure that, that all boards are comfortable that it's been truly for unforeseen reasons, and then make some decisions moving forward to how to replenish the fund.
In future budget years.
Yes. Yeah, but not in this budget, there's not a proposal for it.
Okay. Because the max is $400,000, that can be in any two-year cycle, so we would have a view of what we're...
So that'd be cushioned.
If you do, the, the creative math was, if it was $150,000 in year one, that would require a maximum of $250,000 in year two, which got you to $400,000. And since the max in any one year is $250,000, in two years $400,000, then the third year could only max out at $250,000. So $750,000 represented at least three years' worth of spending.
Right.
To give us time to understand whether or not it's working, whether or not additional funds should be placed.
Good for them.
Great. Okay. Where are we? Sorry. All right, we're moving to 2016 annual town meeting warrant. I need a vote to reopen the warrant.
Are we, do we have to have, because it's on the agenda?
We're not, we're not taking a vote on, on item I.
Do we have to table that or just?
No, we don't have to table, we just don't take action on it.
We're just not gonna take action on it. So I need a vote to, to, to...
Open the warrant.
Second.
Okay. Now I need a vote, now I believe I need, I heard a motion, second, not a vote. Oh, don't, I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
And now I need a vote to add that citizen petition?
Madam Chair, motion to...
Right, am I doing it procedurally?
Procedurally correct.
Because I want to name it correctly.
The motion would be to add the citizen petition delivered today to the board of selectmen.
And that's all, we don't have to, we don't identify in any more detail?
I think that would be fine.
So, Madam Chair, motion, so moved, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Move to close the warrant.
Well, we need an acceptance of the warrant.
Right, now you're accepting the warrant with any, there really has not been, there have been primarily typographical changes to the warrant, there's not been any, it has been reviewed by council. And so we're at a point now where we're recommending that we accept the warrant and then vote to close the warrant. The recommendations really don't need to be done while the warrant's open, those are really narrative to the, to the warrant.
Right. So do I have a motion to accept the warrant?
Motion to accept the warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion of, uh, close the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a tricky navigation.
It is, I tell you.
It could be tricky.
Need a book, thank God, moderated to savos in the room.
No, you need to be extra careful.
Steak and coke.
I borrow there.
Okay, okay, except for when the warrant's closed. Now, town meeting warrant recommendations. I hate this spot.
So you'd have to make a motion like you usually do.
I know.
Wait, can I just ask a question and with all due respect, I mean, we're facing our election next week, is it, is this the right time to do these?
I am perfectly fine with putting it off, however, if you speak to town manager, a town manager would like it to be done due to printing or something.
If you do not vote him this evening, then your opinion on these will not appear in the printed warrant. We are, if you, if you recall peeling back, none of us are particularly happy with the town meeting date this year because it's really compressed the schedule for, for you folks, for the FinCEN, for us, for the town clerk. We're in a May 10th deadline, so we work everything back from that, that's between six and 10 days shorter schedule than, than is typical, and therefore everything's a little compressed in terms of schedule.
Okay.
And so that's, we, we need to get to print, that's early April, but you're not due to meet again until April 11th.
Oh, then I'm, I'm comfortable with these recommendations, with all these making recommendations.
Well, I think we're also, if, if, it's not unusual for, there's some I'm not ready to vote on either tonight. So it is not unusual, and historically has been done, that more, what's the word I'm looking for?
Complicated?
Complicated issues or, or articles have been put off for recommendation the night of town meeting. For instance, even community preservation, while I support everything, I don't support the last one, I don't really know yet. So I can't give it a up or down, I mean...
So we'll take it by case by case. I could say it was very, I mean, last year, I think that was my first meeting when we went over 16 and 17-year-olds.
Yes, it was, it was your first meeting, and that's usually how it's done.
So the answer to the question I'd asked is, you can cite an article one and decide on each and every article whether or not you support it, don't support it, so recommend favorable action?
Well, many of these...
Or, or decide to take no action at this point?
Right.
And report a town meeting.
Let's take it by article by article then, right?
So we'll, so we'll assume that if you're not gonna take action on article as favorable or unfavorable, that you're gonna make a report at town meeting. That's what we'll assume. And let's note it other way.
Yes.
Great.
Okay?
We're good.
Article One. We don't have that breakdown. We usually have that.
The short sheet?
Yeah.
No, so that's my fault.
That's all right.
Just a summary.
I like the sheet.
She likes the summary.
Motion to recom...
Favorable.
Favorable act, no, I just wanted to make sure that I have the right one in front of me. Motion to recommend favorable action on Article One, Reports of School Committee.
We can take a few of these, right?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, you can take a few. Mother's in favor.
Yeah, can the motions include them in bulk?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we'll continue on.
Would it help for those presenters for me to just literally very quickly state the article?
Yes.
So folks, okay, why don't, just because I think it would help, I'll go quick.
You're going to go through every single article?
But I will go quick, because I just think that if folks are watching, just because if someone, I don't, I can do whatever you'd like.
Yeah, we usually, we say what it's about.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I'll give less than an hour. So, so the, um, let me get there. Can I use yours? Okay, so the, uh, here, one.
Oh, we already voted on one, so...
We already voted on one, okay. So two is the report, uh, the Report of Receipts and Expenditures. It's an annual article that, that quite frankly is perfunctory. It'll, it requires the identification of the 2015 adoption...
You're going to do that for Iowa?
No, I'm not, I promise. The, the adoption of 2015 Annual Town Report. Three, Article Three is the Authorization of Town Manager and the Superintendent to, to enter into contracts in excess of three years. We put this on the warrant every year. Item Four is the Authorization to Accept Grants of Easements by the Board of Selectmen. Item Five is the Authorization to Grant Easements. Again, so you want to, we can stop at those groups and take them together.
Madam Chair, motion to recommend favorable action for Articles Two, Three, Four, and Five as written.
Second.
That's good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Article Six is Amending the Dog Bylaw for the Third Year in a Row, and I, I promise, by hook or crook, we won't amend it again next year. We substantially modified the dog bylaw last year. This year, there's been a slight amendment where the hearing officer can, is typically the chief or the chief's designate, but not the animal control officer. So you can't be the enforcing authority and then be the hearing.
That's good.
That makes sense.
Move favorable?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item Seven is Electrical Aggregation. It kicks off the process. We've had twice a group before this Board asking to support electrical aggregation for the residents of North Andover, so we'd be able to privately procure electrical energy for our residents. This starts that process.
Move favorable?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Eight is one of the five provisions required to enter the green communities process. We have, we have, it's the, what's identified as a stretch energy code. It's a portion of the building code, which now in essence is part of the building code, it's been incorporated. This was, the town has taken the other steps, although we'll be back to visit the Board to explain in more detail over the summer. But the Board has taken addition, there was a as-of-right zoning requirement that's already been adopted by the Board. I'm in advance of this, I have had conversations with those folks who five years ago had some, struggled with this, and they've indicated support this time through. In essence, because the stretch energy code and the building code really mirror one another.
Yeah.
Move approval?
Second.
And I'll just say that I've also had conversations with folks regarding as to who it would affect, and they are now in favor of it.
Yes.
As part of, it's part of the...
Yes, the ones who spoke against it.
Yes.
About being now in favor.
We guessed before the call.
That was actually, when it first was, it was, that was pretty contentious. We actually beat that back a little bit in town. But, yes, I'm in favor now too, it's different.
It's different now.
The good news is the fact it's changed so that there is very little difference, is that when the town proceeds this, moves forward with the green community designation, we will have an entitlement grant of more than $150,000.
Right, the pros are definitely in the closet, and it's already in place.
So there's a series of zoning articles, I am not going to...
You want to vote on that one?
Oh, yeah, we have a favorable in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So there's a series of zoning articles. Article Nine, I am certainly not reading it. Goes on at great length. It's a zoning article. Article Ten is also a zoning article. It goes on for a bit. Article...
The new article?
Eleven.
Eleven is a zoning article. Again, I'm not going to go through the details of the zoning, specific zoning articles.
Article Twelve and Thirteen is Street Eleven, Three, Street Expenditure.
But I don't even understand what you're saying.
Hold on a sec. Let's, let's, let's start with the zoning articles.
So, I just received this last week, and I haven't really had it. I was on vacation, I haven't changed. I mean, there is a lot of information in here that I'd like to defer.
So you want to make a report at town meeting on that one?
Yes.
So we can motion to that effect?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I can't make the motion.
No, he made it.
I made the motion to, to make our recommendation at town meeting. My, my motion...
He made the motion.
All right, let me, let me be clear. My mo, my motion is for Articles Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, and Thirteen to be made at town meeting.
Great. You will have, by the way, in that, just so you get to Twelve and Thirteen...
All those in favor, hold on.
Sorry.
That's okay, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Articles in Thirteen require a meeting before the Board of Selectmen, a hearing, and those will be placed on an agenda during the month of April. So you'll hear from those applicants on Twelve and Thirteen.
So we'll pass it on those as well?
Uh, Mr. Valencourt did through his motion.
Okay.
Article Thirteen is the citizen petition for the...
Article Fourteen. Article Fourteen is the citizen petition.
Correct, Article Fourteen, I apologize. Citizen petition for the, that's the consuming testing services petition by Mr. Tulen et al.
So this will, it will still appear, Mr. Tulen, before town meeting, however, I would make a motion unfavorable action.
Second. I'll second that, basically because I just truly don't understand it, and I can't make a motion on, and I just think that $10 million is a deal breaker. So, that's my, my reasoning.
All those in favor?
Can I appeal?
Favorite.
It's simply, it's simply our, our recommendation.
Right.
It's, we are, this is simply just, you can't really appeal our opinions.
I, I just want to, you know, just reiterate that this is at, at no negative cost to the town or the Board, and I would strongly urge you to reject the unfavorable vote and to give it favorability. Having gone through the process thus far, you know that I've shown up to...
Right, you're going to have an opportunity.
If you're going before town meeting, I'm just saying to you, I'm going to be holding up the card to vote against it.
Right. So, we have...
What I'm trying to say is, I think that...
You've had your opportunity though, Mr. Tulen. You're going to have another opportunity on the floor of town meeting, where you're going to get to speak to all of the voters and all of the folks, as well as us.
Right, but I, I don't...
So we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor of unfavorable action?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Fifteen is a citizen petition to eliminate the local options, mealstacks, petition, or stand no back at all.
Very unfavorable action.
Second.
I would actually, I would at least like to hear from the restaurant owners, because like the rest of you, I fought very hard against this and spoke at great length against this. But I, the few that I've spoken to seem to, um, they seem to be in favor of keeping it. But I, I would like to hear a little bit more about it and where the money would come from. So I would ask that we make a recommendation at town meeting.
But we have a motion and a second. All those, for favorable action, however.
Unfavorable.
Unfavorable action, I'm sorry.
So I also have, want the opportunity to speak to a few other folks. I've done a little bit of research with the, with the revenues and et cetera, but I think I'd like to have a little more time to do a little more work into it, so...
So we could vote and then have another?
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
Yeah, we've done that before.
So all those in favor of unfavorable?
On recommending unfavorable action?
Yes.
Aye.
No.
So?
Yes, I, we recommend that town meeting, we recommend, I, motion, second.
Right, and I'm saying no.
And I'm saying no.
Oh, oh, you said, you said no as a...
I'm saying make motion at town.
The motion is defeated three to two.
Right, motion is defeated three to two, and now we make another motion.
Oh, okay.
I would move that we would make our recommendation at town meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor of that? Aye.
No.
No.
Okay, three to two.
Mr. DeSalvo.
Mr. DeSalvo. Moderator DeSalvo, sorry.
If I could just help on the record relative to Mr. Tulen's article, there's been references that he will in fact get the opportunity to represent it at town meeting on the floor. That judgment has not been made by me at this moment.
Oh, my apologies.
And Mr. Tulen and I have had very collegial conversations and email testimonials. He was frankly advised by me to, in order to ensure the opportunity presented at town meeting, that he presented in a resolution form. He chose not to do so and to seek an appropriation. And I've not yet made a judgment as to whether it's in appropriate form for presentation at town meeting. And I frankly intend at a later time to ask town council's advice. Mr. Tulen asked for access to town council. I told him that could not be provided to a citizen, requested of him that he seek his own independent council. I don't know whether in fact he'd actually done so or not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
So Article...
Well, with my experience, I don't feel that I would need any additional counsel. I think that, in review of your decision, I think that you might want to confer with counsel as to your, your objectives in voting unfavorably. I don't think that I have reached the threshold of any taxation or any objective responsibility to the town that would be in the lines of a unfavorable vote. So maybe you want to review that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, next round.
Article Sixteen, Set the Salute and Conversation of Elected Officials as Printed. This is the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Moderator for Annual and Special Town Meetings.
Move favorable?
Oh, Mark, you're going to really pocket, pocket that night?
Making some coin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Seventeen is continuation and approval of the revolving funds. The revolving funds are the same revolving funds we've had for any number of years.
A favorable recommendation?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Eighteen is...
I'm, I'm, I'm not hedging, I just, we, we just approved a budget that in order to be, needs to be funded by...
We didn't approve it, we just made it favorable action.
We just recommended, we recommended favorable action, Autumn.
We just made it favorable.
Article Eighteen is the approval of the payments of prior bills. Any town with bill, we receive bill after the end of the fiscal year, we need funding approval from town meeting by four fifths votes. So these represent four bills which arrived after the end of the fiscal year.
Move favorable?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Nineteen is the budget.
Move favorable?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Twenty is the Water Enterprise Fund for 2017.
I guess I keep it going, move favorable?
Yeah, go. All those in favor?
Aye.
You know, it's getting late on people. It's so slow.
It's true. Article, uh, which one did I, the water?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one is the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Twenty-two is the Stevens Estate Enterprise Funds.
Move favorable for both?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-three is the capital improvement request for 2017.
Move approval?
Favorable. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know, we're getting tired, man.
Article Twenty-four is transfer, transfer of the General Stabilization Fund. This is the amount that we, through our financial reserve policies, try to obtain or try to accumulate 5% of general fund revenues. The appropriation request to reach that standard this year is $60,000, $17,000.
Move favorable action? Wait, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number Twenty-five is transfer of the Capital Stabilization Fund. This year's request is $350,000.
Move favorable?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Twenty-six is a transfer from the Health Insurance Trust Fund to the OPEB, Other Post-Employment Liability Trust Fund. This is the fund we created last year with the amount of $500,000. The request this year is for $250,000.
Move favorable?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Article Twenty...
Aye.
Article Twenty-seven is the Report of the Community Preservation Committee.
Move that we withhold that until town meeting?
Second.
Good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Twenty-eight is a, is a new article that we've just been advised we needed to create. So we receive funding from these Verizon and Comcast cable agreements. Typically, these are the appropriation into these funds have not required town meeting vote. We've been informed now by the Department of Revenue, they do require annual town meeting vote, and therefore this article, Article Twenty-eight, creates the fund and appropriates the dollars that are received from Comcast and Verizon in the form of what we call PEG fees.
I guess I would move favorable, seeing how we have to do it.
We have to do it, so...
One final item, oh, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm rushing, aren't I? One final item, I don't know why. One final item is the one article in the Special Town Meeting Warrant, and that article is to transfer, um, I just noticed a typo, but anyway.
Special education fund?
Transfer of funds from the Special Education Stabilization Fund to the fiscal 2016 School Department Budget.
Madam Chair, motion favorable action on the transfer of $150,000?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we have one more, Mr. Man.
And then...
Yes, I apologize, yes.
I got, I can't even read it.
Yeah, I think I'd make a motion that we withhold that until town meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion? Oh, fine.
Just for the purpose of, so as a function of opening town meeting and closing it, I made the assumption that the sequencing is that, that that citizen petition will appear...
With zoning.
As the third, well, as the third citizen petition, you want it in zoning?
Uh, no, it is a citizen petition, but it is about zoning, so I'm, I'm sure where it should land.
What is preference on that?
I think it should be in zoning.
I think it should be in zoning since it's zoning, but...
Maybe a little bit.
I suppose it...
Well, it's a citizen's petition.
It is a citizen's position, uh, petition, yes, but it's, it's in regards to zoning and, you know, I don't know because of it, if it doesn't get through planning, I don't know.
See, great, I'm with you on that.
Well, it can be.
Jeez, I don't know.
You can, you can put it there and it can be moved out of order. Right, Mr. Moderator?
Can I move it?
Yes.
He's obviously saying he wouldn't like that, but...
Madam Chairman, why you go through the lights unless somebody uses a laser?
Okay.
So I may be assuming when you opened and closed the warrant that the citizen petition would appear as the third citizen petition?
Yes.
Would you like to stay with that?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
It's going to get blurred no matter where it goes.
Right, no matter where it goes, right. May I have a motion to move into licensing?
So moved.
So are we not closing?
We've already told.
If we're officially, we, we, okay.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Need a second?
Um, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're now in licensing. Okay, so the first petition we have before is licensing, is an application for the transfer of all alcoholic package store license, pledge of license and change of DBA from Merriloy's Store LLC. They are purchasing the Denrock Liquor Mart at 54 Peter Street from Jay Om Si Inc. A favorable recommendation is included from the Fire Department, Building Department, and Police Department, and there was a legal ad that ran. Is there someone here to speak to this?
Yeah. Good evening, my name is Joe Devlin. I'm not a candidate for the in-house council position.
Do you want to be?
No, I actually think you will get a wide variety of applicants, someone that might be able to grow with you, or somebody who's at the back end of their career and this looks like a good position. So you might get somebody with an amazing amount of knowledge as well, so, for my two cents, which has no bearing whatsoever in what you have.
But we appreciate it nonetheless.
A city council, I know, but it works.
There you go.
So what do you think? What do you think? How's it going?
Um, with me is Ankit Patel. I do represent Merriloy's Store LLC, that they're buying Denrock Liquors at 54 Peter Street in North Andover. I should be familiar with this location, because I was here before, the original transfer to the current owners. Ankit is the 90% member. He's the manager of the LLC. He's also the proposed manager of record. There is another 10% member owner, is Katchia Jay Patel, but he won't be working at the store. He's just an investor in this. The purchase price is $325,000. They're estimating that the bill of $50,000 of inventory when they finally buy it. Most of that's coming from Rockland Trust, and then some money from investments of Mr. Patel. Mr. Patel lives in Andover, don't hold that against him.
Yeah, he goes paid.
He's got four other stores that he owns. He doesn't operate, he's only a manager of record on one other in Haverhill. He operates these with, with different partners, most of them relatives, and each one of them takes a store. This is going to be his store. I did notice a typo in the manager's application. We had him down for 30 hours. He's actually, it's supposed to be 40 hours. Again, because he lives nearby, he will be there often. It's the same lease, they, they changed it slightly in the, in the assignment. They reduced the amount of deposits being held because they have better standing in credit than, than the current, or the current owner did when they bought it. And they added another one, a five-year option. Other than that, everything's going to be run the same, and Mr. Patel is here to answer any questions you might have.
I have one question. How come you didn't bring in samples?
Yeah.
We can use your power.
Next.
So, just looking through the package, and the police, fire, and building departments all recommend favorable action on this. It looks like all the licensing and all of the other applications are in order, the petition for change of license. I think Selectmen, Ms. Medelia will, will give you her, her standard caution, but I'll, I'll just start out by saying you're, you know, very closely located to a college that has many underage kids in there that have a lot of fake IDs, so you need to be extra diligent in your checking of those IDs. We recommend that you get a machine to check those IDs. And there are some out there, I think we have, our police department would recommend one, a similar one that they use that is very, very accurate. It, it might be a little bit of an investment, but it sounds like, you know, it's a good one because it's going to protect your license and make sure you check everyone's ID.
Yes.
Very good. You did a good job. You've been listening to the show.
I know, I wish stuff, so...
No, well, the, the only thing is, out-of-state licenses are not to be used as a form of identification. If you do use them, you use them at your own peril. It's only Massachusetts state. And as Selectman Valencourt said, we've got a lot of very bright kids that go to Merrimack College and others that aren't quite there yet in age, so be very careful. This is your warning. This is your warning at this meeting.
So I can go to the police department and ask for that?
Yeah, they'll help you.
Okay.
They'll make recommendations, but good luck, and we hope all that goes well.
Move approval.
Okay, I have a motion for approval, a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Good luck.
Madam Chair, are you not going to make your stand as well on behalf of North Andover?
Oh, I wasn't gonna let him get away. We also have a very active and wonderful merchants community here in the town of North Andover. We have the North Andover Merchants Association, northandovermerchantsassociation.com, you can look us up. It's a great organization, we'd love you to be a part of it.
And it's four of us at the table that are as well?
Yes, and four of us are members sitting right here at the table.
Not exactly, is it?
It is a, it's like a local chamber of commerce, except we're on a smaller scale. So currently, there's about 115 businesses that partake in it. Much of what we do is philanthropic through the community, but together, it's about building our businesses, our community, getting the word out about how, you know, a lot of it is stay local, shop local, and it's businesses building businesses. So it's North Andover Merchants Association, we'd love to have you join.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Welcome to North Andover.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I did skip by one, which...
You're all set.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're all set. Sorry, I was already in...
He skipped another item.
I did, I skipped by Merrimack College, but I don't think anyone's here for Merrimack College, so it was better to take them first. Merrimack College is applying for a one-day wine and malt for the Rogers Center for Performing Arts Lobby on Saturday, April 9, 2016, from 8:30 p.m. to 11:30 p.m., and Thursday, April 21, 2016, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. We have favorable recommendations from the police, fire, and building, and all the fees have been paid.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll have a motion to move out of licensing.
Motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back into the general meeting.
Moving on to old business, a request from the Bradstreet Partners LLC to modify the development plan at the Bradstreet. Good evening. This is a continuation from the meeting of March 7. My apologies, I was actually absent at that meeting.
Thank you very much. My name's Phil Perkins, I'm manager of Bradstreet Partners LLC. It's actually been three years since we submitted the RFP. It's hard to believe. We spent several months on a PNS, and then it was several months of permitting and appeals periods, and then after that, there was a negotiation of a land development agreement, and then last year, finally, the schedule. So a lot has happened in that time, but we finally got a demolition permit last July, and we immediately got to work, and then about, let's see, I think it was in August, late August, we signed the LDA and got a building permit. So in that time, so we've really been underway for about six months, it included the winter. We, the building B, which is the apartment building on Saunders Street, is basically framed, I think the roof is going on next, and the windows and doors, so that's moving along well. That's all market rate housing, and that's according to plan, so we're not here anything related to that. The building A, so we have a lot of excitement on the retail, and what happens with commercial projects is different than residential. So as we talked about last week, residential projects, the lenders, lenders love this project, but there's certain requirements, so when you do, when you do a commercial use, you have to have a certain amount of credit tenants signed up to go in there. And so we have not been able to make much inroads in that time. Even before we started, we did a lot of marketing, we've, you know, we've had a sign-up for a year, we've done Craigslist, we actually, small, small commercial, we get very good response generally from Craigslist, if there's people out there. We're also on LoopNet. It, sometime last summer, right around the time when we were really gonna start construction, and we were into the schedule with Mr. Mailer, we planted the seed that we're having trouble with office, you know, between the Schneider and the Converse, and then demographic changes going on with the way people and small businesses work, the healthcare industry, a lot of the small doctors' offices, you probably know, there's several in North Andover, that Emerson Hospital, Leahy, Beth Israel, they're, because of the cost of running their offices under the new healthcare, so a lot of the tenants that we normally would have had for offices are gone. And as I also pointed out that last time, in, if this is humming, if I'm talking too loud, just...
Just push it forward.
Okay. So, Mr. Mailer at the time said, you know, let's get through the, you know, get the permit going, and then, you know, if you're gonna come back with something, come back. So last fall, we prepared a, you know, an update of the downtown, and it wasn't just talking about perhaps a change of the space, it was parking requirements, you know, we have people that leave their cars in front of the building all day long, so things of that nature was touched on, some of the history, some of the great walk score numbers that the town has, and some suggestions that other communities have done. And it also included what we thought were, was the process for a modification. And Mr. Mailer differs somewhat, I guess, with that, and so that's why we're here. Again, it's been three months to get here, and then the way I understand it, we have to go through the planning board for a, hopefully, an insignificant change. When we came in front of you a couple weeks ago, we didn't have a specific change about how many units, I think Mr. Stewart asked, and others asked for more detail. We were really focused on the change, and we thought that those could work out with the planning board, but in the interest of keeping this moving and getting back on track, because we've been stalled for at least three months, we can build within the same structure, the same, you know, there might be a window here or a roof line slightly changed, but basically the same structure which was approved. Without any changes, we can get eight units, which is similar to the office that was proposed, and that would be significantly lower parking requirements, so that's an added benefit to it, based on the three per thousand square feet that offices typically, sometimes it's one per 300, but it's about the same. So we proposed this change, we've had, we've had very little luck at this location or at other locations with office, there's a tremendous amount of space. As Rosemary pointed out, a lot of it isn't the best space out there, but, you know, when people are looking for, to set up a new operation, the few of them that are out there, there are definitely a lot of options. And even though, nobody's building spec office, nobody that I know of, there's no commercial broker that we've spoken to that thinks it's a good idea or thinks it'll be successful. I quoted six of the, you know, an appraiser that does a very high percentage of the deals around here. I got another one today, which I sent to Mr. Mailer from a broker right around the corner that does a lot of work, so, you know, I feel bad, it's gotten a little contentious, I didn't expect that. I think we've tried, we've, it's beyond our control, and we want to keep this working. Both LaGrass and Associates and us have, I think, an excellent experience with North Andover, we've never had a problem, done good projects, and we don't want to have a contentious relationship in any manner, but this is beyond our control, and we don't feel that it makes any sense to delay it any further. We, again, we provided information from a lot of experts, I don't think anyone can question, we can ask five more, but I don't, I don't think, there just aren't people creating new offices for the type that would be here. Three years ago, when we proposed this, it was one of four options that we were willing to do. We had hoped that we would have, leaving the office option on there, that we would be able to track some existing office for a for-sale product, where a lot of them are for lease, we would do a for-sale or for-lease. But in that time, for the reasons mentioned, that market's really dried up. In fact, even the West Mills, which is a great project, I mean, they, my understanding is they're converting the other way, they're taking office out and put into residential. We're not proposing any apartments, we're proposing homeownership, which has been very successful in that area, and I think the, in the end, we all want a successful project. We have had a problem, we sign up, we make deals with people on the retail, on a, on a letter of intent, and again, you need enough of them, so your lender says, okay, now you have enough to start the framing. We wanted, in deference to Mr. Mailer, we wanted to get the foundation in because we said, we were hopeful that we would keep the project moving, so we got the foundation in at the end of the year. But then in the last, you know, in the last three months, we've been, you know, understandably, it's a big decision, so we wanted to come in here and explain our situation. And I, you know, I'm a little surprised because I don't think it's a bad thing, I think this is something that every downtown in, that I have heard of that's had a healthy rebound, you know, Portsmouth, Amesbury, Andover, all of these places want to have homeownership people in market rate housing and their, market rate apartments in their downtown. So I don't, I think it's more, we're entitled under our agreement to respond to market demands, and that's what we did. We've legitimately tried, I have a property a little bigger than this in Andover, hadn't had vacancies in 15 years, and it's very difficult to find people that are starting businesses that need, you know, need, other than medical, and as I said, a lot of them, because of the insurance changes and the cost of setting up a medical office now, are going a different direction, being bought out by bigger companies. So I'd be happy to answer your questions, I can get more real estate experts, I can show you our data, but I think it's beyond our control, and I think a homeownership would be a great addition to the downtown, so...
So if I can just, Mr. to call you, just for the point of filling some gaps, because I think a couple of things have been said, some things have been said over the last two meetings, and I think it's important to put the context around this before wherever the board goes in the decision. First of all, it needs to be clearly understand, I think Mr. Perkins certainly understands and the board does, this was, this project was voted by the board, and the result after that point was significant negotiations. This isn't anything that was done casually, or is on the back of a napkin somewhere. There are, there's a very substantial purchase and sale, land development agreement, a tripartite agreement, and otherwise, another, an agreement required by the town that binds the lender with the developer and the town. The construction schedule for the project is memorialized in the back of the land development agreement. These documents are filed at the Registry of Deeds. This is a, you know, very significant land transfer for what is, in essence, a $300,000 transaction, right? Economically, you know, less than a house sale, but to this particular board, it was important that all of the belts and suspenders associated with the proposal made will memorialize in documents. And in every one of those documents, it indicates very clearly that there are two parts to this project, a 15-unit residential project facing Saunders Street, and an approximately 19,000 square foot building to be comprised of commercial and retail, or some combination of the above, not rental, not housing, on a...
Excuse me, I don't think it says that.
Well, let me...
I don't think it says not housing.
That's fine.
Well, that was the intent of the...
Let me, no, let me, it's not even about intent, it's very clear. The recitals are very clear. On the tripartite agreement between the lender, yourself, and the town, very clearly says, demolish the building located in the property and construct two buildings, one being a commercial building, fronting on Main Street, consisting of 16,000 square feet to 19,000 feet, divided approximately equally between the first and second floor, containing mixed retail office space, and two, a residential building towards the rear of the property, containing 15 units. Doesn't provide options associated with that. The same language is memorialized in the land development agreement, without options for the alternative. The same is memorialized in the purchase and sale agreement. The same is memorialized in your funding letter from the bank. And it's very clear why it was done that way. It didn't preclude you the option for having this conversation, but it didn't provide you the latitude that I think has been implied. And the reason it didn't was, this was the process, this was the conclusion of an RFP process, where there was, in essence, I guess, eight proposals, right? Four from you, and three other single proposals. And the board, through its actions, decided on one of your four proposals, very specifically selected that option, and therefore, it's part of the reason it took us 18 months to negotiate the agreements, because we wanted to make sure that what was voted was delivered, but that there was an option, and certainly reserves that right, that there was an option to deliver something else, if the board that voted for this proposal agreed it should change. I mean, there shouldn't be, and we can spend a lot of time on it, but quite frankly, all you need to do, in the public documents, feel free to go to the Registry of Deeds, they've all been filed in the Registry of Deeds, it's very clear that what this board signed as documents say that this is going to be a commercial building on Main Street. It doesn't say or something else, or and something else, it's very clear about that. That's first. Two, your lending documents indicate that there are two ways to trigger the funding on the commercial building. One is the one you've described in two meetings, and that is, if 50% of the building is under agreement, that will release funding. But actually, that's the second provision. The first provision says, if you achieve 50% occupancy on the residential building faces Saunders Street, which should happen by the summer, they will in fact release the funds for the commercial building once you receive that cash flow. So it already assumed, this was a very, very, as you know, because we spent a lot of time discussing it, this was a very detailed discussion and negotiation, it included attorneys, a lot of our staff on both sides, and it very much was geared to do one thing, and that was to deliver the proposal voted by the board. And if there's one thing that's been repeated by me and my staff, it has been exactly that. The decision by this board was significant, and they have the right to change that, but it starts first with the understanding that the proposal was the proposal with commercial, and then we go to the point where the board wants to change it. And you have the ability through your own financing documents to release the funds or secure the funds to construct the entire commercial development as soon as you receive 50% cash flow on your residential property. So that everybody understands, to Mr. Perkins, not the fence, but to the discussion, attached to these documents was a construction schedule, very important so we can manage ourselves in terms of the expectations. Mr. Perkins, in fact, leveled the site and constructed the foundation for the commercial building in advance of when he was required to. So this discussion, which is sort of out there about, well, how long will it stay that way? I can tell you, Mr. Perkins, even if he plans on fully constructing the commercial site, doesn't have to complete that building to the midsummer of next year. This was a 24-month development cycle with the assumption that the residential would be built first. All you have to do is read the financing documents, the land development agreement, the purchase and sale, and every other document associated with this, to recognize that it benefited the developer and the town to have the residential developed first and the commercial second. So you shouldn't be concerned that there's a foundation at this point and nothing else. But in order to have what I would say is an intellectually honest discussion, we need to begin with the point that the documents are unequivocal, lending documents, tripartite agreement, construction schedule, purchase and sale, and LDA, it assumes 100% commercial, it doesn't allow for anything else. With that, it's up to you folks to decide if you want to alter it, but I think it really is crystal clear as to the expectation of the documents.
Mr. Perkins?
Mm-hmm.
Did our town manager, the way he just described the finding, the financing mechanisms, the two options, is that how you understand it as well?
No.
That's not how you understand it?
The, there is an option that, it's half, half the case, there is an option if we achieve, I think it's a 1.3% debt coverage ratio, so it isn't just that it would be 50% cash flow, there's a certain debt coverage ratio.
I want, I want to focus specifically, the town manager described a scenario where if you received, if you had 50% occupancy in the residential or 50% commitment, that that would release financing.
No, like I said, there's other requirements related to our debt coverage ratio that have to be achieved, and that wouldn't be, you know, wouldn't be covered by that, so...
Covenant C of the documents associated with financing says, "Construction of the second structure in Parency's commercial building can commence once there is demonstrated cash flow from the apartment buildings to support debt service on a permanent basis at a minimum of one times coverage based upon projected income and expenses as determined by the bank." It is estimated that this level will be achieved at approximately 50% lease-up of the apartment building.
Sure, I mean, I don't know what the number is, but, you know, I don't even know if they know what the rents would be, so I would, I wasn't prepared to talk about our funding documents, but...
Well, the reason why I ask is because one of the first things you told us at our last meeting was that you were having difficulty securing financing, and here is the town manager explaining that...
Excuse me, I never said we had difficulty...
No. It was just misunderstood, and I think it's an important quote, I don't think he said that.
In fact, I think you asked that, I specifically said it was a very easy project to finance, but the certain requirements...
Correct.
...related to that financing, so I didn't want you to misunderstand.
At the prior meeting, though, and even if that is a misunderstanding, that is how it was presented to us, that you were...
I think it was said, and then it was clarified afterwards, after questions were asked, so, so yes, that was put out there, and then it was, then there was a clarification, so...
This project has a 90% loan-to-value ratio, it is well-funded and well-leveraged, and there is nothing in the agreements other than compliance with the expectation of the LDA and the tripartite agreement, but this development shouldn't move forward. There's nothing about the financing aspect of this agreement that is preventing this development from moving forward, short of whether or not there's a question of the cash flow and the relative release of the funds. But this fund is completely, not only funded by a local bank, underwritten by Mass Development.
So what you're saying, you want us to wait till the end of the summer?
No, I'm saying...
And if we achieve that, and we get our bank to do it, then we go, I don't understand.
I simply want to set the record straight about the fact of financing, which I do think was misunderstood, I did, I don't interpret what you comment, but it was, we've gotten some feedback as well, that folks believe that this was not a properly funded project, that's just not accurate.
Yeah, well, I...
And two, I want to make sure we're, that at least from my board's perspective, and you may disagree, that there are three significant documents to this agreement, the LDA, the tripartite agreement, the purchase and sale, in addition to the financing documents, and all of which are crystal clear, there's an expectation that there's gonna be a commercial building on Main Street. That can be altered by this board, but it is not gray in terms of the documents signed by all of the parties. It is not gray, and the bank included, the bank expected this project as proposed and adopted by the board, because they prescribed it very specifically in the agreement that had, the town is signed, along with the bank officials, along with your organization. So there really shouldn't be confusion of that, and again, all of these documents have been filed with the Registry of Deeds, that, we shouldn't start at a point of assuming that there's some wiggle room here, we should have started with the assumption that you're asking to change the proposal, and that the board of Selectman has the authority to choose to do that or not. I also want to be clear that just because you built the foundation and haven't yet continued, that in and of itself is no violation to the agreement. And again, attached to all of these agreements is the construction schedule, very clearly outlines the expectation of the parties, and the commercial building doesn't have to be delivered in full occupancy until somewhere in the summer of 2017.
I think it isn't even full occupancy, it's not, the exterior frame would be complete, so I think that's the way it's worded.
May 31, 2017 is the completion of the entire project.
Right, and if you look at the definition of project, it's that the exterior is finished. So in the definition...
By May 1, and again, I'll release this public, if May 1, 2017, the commercial building construction completion includes a definition of complete commercial building, construction, interior, fit up depending upon the tenants, that's May 1.
Right, fit up depending on the tenant, so the common area and the exterior have been finished, so I, I mean, I have no control over tenants.
I just wanted to be clear that the assumption that the building is there, and is it because you haven't yet decided to proceed, is not a reflection either of the financing or a reflection of the project sort of dying on the bottom. It's been a conscious decision not to go above grade at this point, but quite frankly, based on your schedule, you don't have to yet.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, let's say, you and I spoke last summer, in the fall, the office is a very difficult road to go, and we, again, it's been three months now, but we provided a very extensive package on that in explaining the situation, and then I followed it up with this past two weeks, with specific quotes by a number of very prominent real estate professionals that do deals all the time. It's not a good idea to do office, it's not good for downtown and... It's not good for downtown, and, and my fear is, is that as the economy softens, it's going to get more difficult. And so I, I don't think it's a good idea professionally, and I think all of those professionals backed me up. I gave you all their email addresses. I gave you another one today that basically says the same thing.
Again, in fairness, you sent it to me via email, email at 6 o'clock.
I, I know, I have copies of that.
I think this time is, Bill, that we get into the spot where you, you drop references, and you got to put them in the proper context, because saying you had this conversation with me, I'll tell you what the response was in the fall. You just signed an LDA on, on September 23rd. Now you're telling me about changing the proposal you just memorialized that took us 18 months to negotiate. You have to imagine sort of the interesting moment when filing documents with the registry of deeds on September 23rd after working at it for somewhere between two years and 18 months, and we're talking about changing a proposal which I've just recommended to the board to sign. I mean, so, you know, if we're going to do the full disclosure.
I don't know where it got contentious between us because I thought we were, we were, it's just we want to make sure everything's.
You just want to make sure that the whole story is.
I meant between me and Mr. Mailer, I mean, I think the, the world of him, I think he's doing a great job in the town. I, I don't mean to imply that, Andrew. I, I'm sorry it got a little contentious when I had about six attorneys we were dealing with. If you remember, you and I kind of said, went down with the attorneys, we were getting no place. So I, I think we've actually generally had a good relationship, and I, and I think there's a lot of great things you're doing in the town. So if I'm applying that, I'm just trying to be respectful of, of your time, but I'm, I'm telling you, given my 35 years in the business, the 100 years in the business of all the experts that are given, that are some of the most active people, the, the office market is dead. There's, there's, the mills have half the price point below what we can, they have things we can't offer. And I'm, I'm just telling you to, I'm suggesting that it would not be wise to wait till the end of the summer, hope that we meet our debt coverage ratio, and then at that point, now you look in, you know, if I have the debt coverage ratio, the economy might be softer than to start another winter project. You know, now we're, we're going into the fourth year. I don't think that's wise, and I think it's, it's a, again, to all the experts I've spoken to, it's a much better project for the homeownership upstairs.
So, Mr. Perkins, why don't you hire the experts to market your property? I have to be honest with you, Craigslist and LoopNet, there are so many other avenues that you can market it. We don't even know what you're charging price per square foot. And there, I would, I would argue that there are some small boutique-type offices that would love that space.
There's no, no expert, Rosemary, that, there's no expert that says that. There's nobody in the market that I've seen in the commercial market.
Mr. Perkins, you signed, September 23rd, correct? So since Sept- since September 23rd, the small office market has collapsed?
No. I'm saying that, 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 that agreement was all based on the previous agreements, okay? It wasn't the time to change it. I asked him, I said, listen, the office market is dead, you know, and he said, well, let's talk about it after we come to an agreement. So that's what I did. I, I mean, Rosemary, I would agree with you if, if this was, you know, a house project or something, but again, LoopNet is the number one by far.
It is, but it doesn't.
In the commercial market.
But it's not easily accessible to the small, the small office type user. And that's why I keep saying, you know, you don't even have a, a big sign up front saying, retail office space coming available, call this.
The sign exceeds the zoning, the billing expect, the billing expect, exceeds a sign by law for, for the record.
What?
The existing sign?
What did he say?
Well, I mean.
You can't hang a sign, is that what you said?
No, no, he's saying that the sign he has out in front now is already exceeding the. We, Mr. Brown, I don't know, our sign person messed up, so we, we, he let us keep it, so.
But, so, I mean, again, I'm not trying to fire any business, but have you engaged someone in the real estate market to try to help you market these? Have you engaged with a real estate or commercial real estate agent?
I can do that. I've been doing this for 35 years. I have relationships with all the companies. Commercial's different than residential, there, it's, but part of the problem too is when you're doing a, we see, and this is retail is a problem too, when you build a new construction, you're not dealing with a Walgreens moving in or, you know, you could have a very good business move in, but they, they don't have the six months, eight months timeframe where they can plan as often, especially the smaller offices. Some of those suites were like 1,000 square feet, so, you know, the idea that someone's going to wait six or eight months, sign a, sign a letter of intent and wait six or eight months for it to be built is, it's just not going to happen.
But you knew that when you made the proposal.
You know, Phil, you can make this adversarial if you want. I mean, I don't, I've been doing this for a long time. We, and to say that, that somehow the board at the time insisted on office, we had four options. One of the discussions during the meeting was, well, you know, what do you want to have upstairs, you know, so it wasn't that, it was like, oh, we have to have offices. I'm telling you, in three years.
I'm going to stop for a moment, because I, I watched that meeting, and.
The retail never changed.
Mr. Perkins, the board was really clear, that board was really clear about their desire to have commercial space on Main Street. And you went forward, now, there was a debate in our community at the time, I would hope that you would have followed it. I agreed with what the board did, I think that it made sense for commercial, but there was a chunk of our community that didn't want to see the historic Bradstreet School be knocked down. To have you come now after you've knocked it down and say, well, now we're going to change the project and change the part that the board really wanted is absolutely frustrating.
The board really wanted office.
The board really wanted commercial. You're asking for residential.
I don't, I don't know what else I can tell you that I haven't. I mean, the market is not there. The, the market is not there, I think the, the, I don't know what else to tell you that I haven't told you.
But I just want, I want, I want you to see, I mean, I'm, I'm not making this adversarial, I'm expressing frustration that I think is, is, more people have contacted me about this issue than any other issues as a member of this board.
People are very upset.
Well, nobody's contacted, neither newspaper person has even contacted me for comment.
Perhaps I'll speak with you after tonight, but.
Well, I, I contacted both of them, and I haven't, they haven't as yet, so.
I'm seeing heads in shake, so I, I just want you to understand the frustration that's out in our community because there's a strong desire, we hear it as members of the board of selectmen in general, we want to see a vibrant Main Street. And the linchpin to a vibrant Main Street is having a vibrant property at where the Bradstreet School was. And the vision that was given to you, and I should say, actually, it's not the vision that was given to you, you came to us. You came to that board and you presented a proposal that included commercial. This isn't us coming in as if it's eminent domain and saying, you have to do this.
You understand it is commercial, it's just as the second floor we're talking about. The first floor would be identical, outside seating.
To be clear, my intent, and I'll use that word intent again, when, when I selected this project as the one that I thought was the best use of that property was to have the commercial building be up front, and when I say commercial, I mean 100% commercial, not residential. Residential component was going to be in the back and the commercial building was going to be in front. That was the intent, that was my.
That was my intent.
When I, when I selected that project and said, this is the one that I really like, that was because of that mix, the commercial and retail and the residential in the back. That was my, that was my choice.
It was a very difficult decision for the board that was sitting at that time. There, there, there were so many different ones that came before us. I had, I had advocated for affordable housing in that particular area. Rosemary and many others had advocated for keeping that, the Bradstreet building.
With, with the retail space.
With the retail space.
Honestly, the building would prob, would be up probably finished, and we might actually even have tenants in those two commercial buildings. And one of the things that you have on the plan is the desirability to have parks, and as you said, a walkable. That plan had a small park in front of the Bradstreet School. So we would have had the school, we would have had the retail, and we would have had a small park, and it probably, if it wasn't finished, it would be very close to being finished. So we're frustrated, and, and Selectman de College Arrow is right. My phone's been ringing off the hook, I've been getting emails, people are not happy. They feel betrayed. I believe you when you say you didn't intend to do that. I believe.
Agree.
But you haven't really tried hard enough yet. You keep saying, my experience, my experience, well.
I, I provided you with six experts that do this every day. I've given you a year's worth of experience. There's nobody that's looking for office. The ones that do, even, even many of the retail ones, there's existing space which is, is, is much less expensive.
But again, your type of office is a little bit different than some of the offices that are in industrial parks or don't have elevators, or they're old, they're tired. You're offering a product that, again, would probably lend itself to a small boutique type of office.
Additionally, you've also said that people who are opening offices aren't opening them a year in advance, you know, they're looking for space that's available within one month, two months.
Build it and they will come.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily true, but you're, but this is, I'm going with what you've said. You've said that people aren't saying, oh, I'm going to open an office 18 months from now. If the space isn't even built, it won't be available to them.
And what I'm saying is, is that the ones that are built are already 30% vacant, so I'm not going to join them. So, I, I mean, I can't.
So I think, so just so you know, we don't have a, there's not anything wrong with our relationship. What you're hearing tonight is exactly what I've expressed for 18 months. The reason it took so long to complete agreements because they had to say certain things. They had to say certain things because I was not confused leaving a very complicated series of meetings, two RFPs as a matter of fact. The first proposal was rejected and we went back to eight others. I was not, and this board is, I mean, believe it or not, it's not that often actually that we recall things similarly, sometimes we actually don't, right? This is a case where the reason it took so long to complete these documents and every word mattered was because every word mattered to this board. Because the community had a very specific vision they conveyed to the board, and, and the board conveyed that to me. It's why the documents, I'm resolute about what they say, because what they say really represent what the board said and what the community said. That's what you're hearing.
I, I understand, this property's been vacant for what, now 12 years, and the, the merchants have suffered, the, the ones I've talked to all can't wait for us to open.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think delaying it anymore is foolish, and I, you know, I'm sorry if you think somehow I misrepresented the case, it's not the case. This is not an easy business, buying public property, and, you know, people are leaving, leaving notes on the fence about the school, and we, we left bricks aside, we tried to work within the community as best we could. We, we gave four options coming in, and, and, you know, in three years, a lot has happened. I mean, nobody's acknowledging, you know, the 300,000 square feet in vacancies at the mills and, and the, they have, they have tons of space left there, and it's all ready to go, and they, we can't build it for what they can offer it for. So I, you know, the idea that somehow we've done anything wrong, or there's, there's an option for us to build something, nobody's building spec office. I don't know what else I can say that I haven't said.
But correct me if I'm wrong, didn't you just say though that you would use the same exterior footprint?
Well, that's because you seemed to want that last week, so I said, we, we did sketches and we can fit it in.
So what you're, right, so you would be fitting in some for-sale residential unit, so why don't you just construct the building and, and continue to market that second floor as office space?
So if you, if you, so you'd have to design all the plumbing, the electrical, the demising walls, partitions, everything, the gas can, everything would have to be designed electrical.
But you had just said, but you had just said that you would, it would just be a shell, you would just do the exterior.
You still have to run the rough utilities in, you still have to have the framing, you have, there's different kinds of egress depending on what, what you have, different type of elevator.
Yeah, I'll leave you that, that you need to have an elevator.
You can't, that can't be done. I mean, the only option is to let it sit there for, and hope that some, you know, some offices come in in the next six months, but again, now we're through another winter, okay? And it's, there would be, the best would be sometime next year. And that's if we get some, you know, I just don't think it's a good idea. I think we should wrap this up. This is a, something the downtown area really needs. We've got a lot of other buildings, we're starting to turn, turn over, and I don't think it's, it's wise to stop that momentum. I mean, credit union is under construction, and, and I talked to Chris Camboras, and he's, he's getting ready to do, you know, design some work to fix a building he bought across the street. The Star Pizza Building's been under agreement a couple of times, but again, to stop that momentum, I think, is, is not wise. It's been a long time.
But as I mentioned to you, I think at the, at the previous meeting, we would certainly entertain retail on the second floor as well, but again.
We can't, you can't get enough on the first floor, I mean, it, there's no, again, nobody's building that.
Wait, wait a minute, you just said we can't get enough on the first floor, so are you saying that you're concerned you're not even going to be able to rent the first floor?
I'm just saying it's not easy. Every time we, we get people to, you know, a, a letter of intent, and we, now we have a three-month delay, you know, those people aren't going to wait. And now you're saying, let's wait till the summer and see if.
But if you're saying people aren't going to wait for three months, then it sounds like you have to build the space before potential tenants can even really consider going into that spot.
I'm saying it's, it's, it's a lot easier to rent space that's up, is what I'm saying, especially office.
Guess we got to, guess we got to get it up then, that office space, right?
Well, I'm not building offices, I can't do it.
So, so, Mr. Perkins, are you putting us into a very bad position here now? What you're saying right now is that you're not going to build the office space, and so we, we either have to give up our vision, we have, we either have to relinquish the vision that we agreed to back how many months ago, or you're not going to build it. So you're putting us in a position that, you're putting us in a no decision, a no-win position. You're saying, either you give me what I want, or it's not going to happen at all.
I'm certainly taking it that way, I would love it if it was office.
You just said that.
Well, I'm saying that there are tenants out there. I, I can't.
But you don't know that because you haven't truly marketed that property though.
And, but, Mr. Perkins, you, you haven't even acknowledged though that you, you are actually putting us in a no-win position because you're forcing us to make a knee-jerk position, decision where we don't lose the momentum on Main Street, but that's not the momentum we want. We don't want residential momentum on Main Street, that's the point you seem to be missing. That's not the type of momentum we want for that, that spot of the property.
I mean, there are options, and they're not really very desirable, but we do have options, I'll let Ms. Bratch talk about it.
I just, I think the direction this is going, I would not, I would not recommend we continue the discussion. I will adhere by the, I believe the agreements cover the board's position on this, and we'll see how things progress.
Okay, so the board's not taking any action?
Well, I, I didn't ask the board not to take action, but if the action is, I, I think, although, the words quite frankly come across as mixed. It's, I'm not trying to be adversarial, but I'm not building. And, and there are requirements with the agreement, I'm just not going to discuss in public session, quite frankly. So the board can decide, and I think they should, whether they want to accept what I assume is a recommended proposal for eight residential units, was that correct? I don't want to put words in the mouth. And then if, if not, then we'll.
The building is otherwise identical, the, the retail would be the same, outside seating, you know, it's a South Wesley exposure, I think the sooner we get that going. I just, I mean, I, it's difficult to, but again, a public property, you said, we've got hundreds of pages of documents, we're in a public session, it's very difficult to portray it, but I don't know how it got adversarial, I'm, I'm being honest with you. I got experts to verify my, my assessment, and I'm just sharing with you that I don't think it's wise to delay it any longer, but, okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. There is no new business this evening within any public comment from our actually filled, full, robust room, full. Any public comment this evening? No.
What are your plans on this whole idea? You can hear me, I don't need to get on the speaker.
Okay, we need your name and address though.
Bob Turner, Saunders Street.